Test, test. Oh, I love this mic. Isn't that wonderful? Good morning. We're going to start in about one minute. We're going to try to be on time. And so about one more minute. So grab your coffee and we'll be hearing from everyone in just a few minutes. Thank you. One minute. All right. If everyone could take their chair, we'll start here. Good morning and welcome to the City of Leon Valley City Council Annual Town Hall Meeting. Today is Saturday, March 26, 2022, and it is nine o'clock in the morning. And I believe we do have a quorum present. I believe I've seen all of the council members. And if everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance before we begin. Thank you. Where's the flag? There it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And it's great to see everyone this morning. And the robo-call worked on some. Some people are here because of the robo-call. So thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning. I'm Mayor Chris Riley and on behalf of your city council, I'd like to welcome everyone to the annual town hall meeting. This actually is our 12th annual. We started in 2011 and we always met on the last Saturday in January, but this January, January 22nd, we had a huge positivity rate for COVID of like 35%. And so our council decided to postpone it very wisely and move it to today. And now the positivity rate is 2.3%. So this was a wise decision, right? So we're here to get your input on what's listed on today's agenda. Has everyone gotten the packet and agenda? It's a pack full day. And again, we're looking forward to a very productive meeting. Let me take a moment to introduce and thank your city council for their involvement and dedication to this annual planning process. Councilor Benny Martinez, if you'll stand. Thank you. Councilor Josh Stevens. Councilor Stevens. Councilor Jed Hefner. Councilor Ray Roscoe. And Mayor Pro Tem William Will Bradshaw. Not William, Will Bradshaw. The council has worked with the citizens and Dr. Caldera, our city manager, and all the directors to establish and develop this agenda. I can testify that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this annual meeting. The staff has worked tirelessly and it's a true team effort. And will the city manager, directors, administrative staff, please stand up and all of the, because we want to recognize you for your efforts too. And I'd like to also thank Sandra Posley, our city secretary, for providing the breakfast this morning. Thank you, Sandra. I know everyone's enjoying it. Dr. Caldera will follow me this morning and giving you the progress from the 2021 town hall meeting, as well as how to connect you online and how to use and vote on the Mentimeter. Does everyone have their cellphone? Because that's what you'll need. And then we have a lot to cover in today's agenda. We have eight topics and then citizens to be heard at the end. This is the way the meeting will be conducted as follows. Let's hear from each presenter all the way through and then without interruption. And then if there's a polling question, let's go ahead and take the polling question and then we'll open it up for questions. And please raise your hand to be recognized. As you can see, we're on a very tight schedule. So if we don't have a chance to get to questions, we'll make sure that they're addressed at the citizens to be heard portion because we have a good chunk of time at the end. Okay? Just want to make sure we get through all of the materials first. The citizens to be heard will also be an opportunity for you to communicate to your city council on any other concern, issue, suggestion, or compliment that you might have. We can't take any action, but we certainly can give factual information and existing policies related to the question or issue. Since the town hall meeting is now in late March, we usually have four, we usually have the town hall meeting in January and then we have four coffees, one in April, one in July, and one in October. So I'm not sure what the council wants to do about the April coffee, but we'll put that on the agenda and decide when we should meet next. Okay? But we are earnestly trying to work at the grassroots level in our community by listening and getting input from our citizens to make the best decisions. The council and I, along with your dedicated staff, work for you. I congratulate and thank each of you for taking time out of your busy day to brainstorm with others on how we can prioritize and shape the future going forward. This is true democracy in action. Let's be respectful of each other and agree to disagree without being disagreeable. Please silence your cellphones. There'll be no breaks today. So please help yourself, get up and get coffee at your leisure. One special request, if you, please don't congregate at the back because we can hear you talk. So just be aware of that. Thank you. And please raise your hand for, if you'd like a question and then, I don't know if we're going to use a microphone. Oh, we have extra microphones so that we can all hear you. Treat each other like you'd like to be treated. And again, we're looking forward to a productive and successful town hall meeting. Now, one more thing before I turn it to Dr. Caldera. Over there where Sandra Posley is, Sandra, raise your hand. We've got a lot of information that I wanted you to know that was there. Voter registration, you have till April the 7th to register a vote for the May 7th election. So Sandra's got cards. We've also got a fluoride survey. Fluoride discussion is going to be up the next council meeting on April the 5th. And then we have a citizens bond survey that we'd like for you to fill out. I think it's going to be mailed to you, but anyway, if you haven't gotten one yet, there's one over there. And then we have information on utility assistance. The council set aside $50,000 to help citizens in need with their utilities. So there's more information over there. Before I turn it to Dr. Caldera, I believe Councilor Stevens, who's spearheaded the fluoride educational effort, is here to say a few words.
Good morning, everyone. So I just briefly wanted to tell you about the fluoride card. I understand fluoride is a controversial issue. I've been approached by some citizens that had requested that we at least evaluate adding fluoride to the Leon Valley water system. And so the purpose of these cards, the yellow cards that are located in the back on the table, is if you have any questions or concerns regarding fluoride or adding it to the water supply, or anything similarly related, fill out one of these, drop it off. If you're watching online, you can email citizens to be heard at LeonValleyTexas.gov with your question or concern. And we're going to try to have all the concerns and questions answered at the beginning of the meeting on April 5th. There'll be a couple of dentists from the UT Health Science Center in our meeting. They're going to give a short presentation and also try to address any of your concerns. So the only other thing that I wanted to say is I'm going to have to step away. I know on the agenda it has me for a certain agenda item. Councilor Bradshaw is going to take over that agenda item. And it's only because the Little League has their opening ceremonies today. And I had previously committed to do that prior to us moving the date. So I'm going to fulfill that commitment over there. And I know we have Leon Valley citizens as well. So thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, council. Do appreciate it. Thank you. Alrighty. I'd like to introduce Dr. Crystal Caldera. I don't think she needs any introduction. I think we all know her. She's been here at our community for many, many, many years. She was appointed unanimously by the city council on January 15th of this year. And it's just been a pleasure working with her. I've known Crystal as long as she's been here. So I thank you so much for being here. So let's give Dr. Caldera a round of applause and thank her for her service. Thank you.
Okay, guys. So good morning. Welcome to our annual town hall meeting. Just so I can get, everybody can get started. You're going to want to click the QR code that's at your individual tables, those tuning in live stream. You can click the QR code or the link that's on your live stream. Or you can go to, if you have an Android phone, you may want to actually just put in the URL, the URL address. And it is www.menti.com/tdnyoia. And that will allow you, when those questions, those polling questions come up, to be able to answer those polling questions. If at any point you have any trouble, just go ahead and raise your hand. I do have staff sitting in the back of the building that is willing to assist you at any time. If you have a phone that is unable to get on, like a flip phone of such, we do have some extra devices available for you to use. So if you have any questions, just raise your hand in regards to the technology and we'll be able to assist you. All right, we can go on to the first set of slides, Mark? Mark, what's the community center password? Access with a capital A 6421 if you need to get on the local wifi. Okay. So we can go on. Mark, how do I switch the slides? This? Green button. This will work a little bit better. All right. So just an update from last year from the 2021 town hall meeting. This won't take long, but y'all, we discussed a large capital improvements project and the city created a capital facilities oversight committee. And basically their mission was to be, to assure the effective, efficient, and lawful use of funds procured for the demolition, construction, and renovation of the Leon Valley Community Pool, Forest Oaks Community Pool, the Library Annex, and the Leon Valley Public Works Facilities. And they are currently working on administering a citizen survey. That's the survey that's in the back of the room. It's also being mailed out to each of the households. You can also click that QR code and do it online if that's your preferred method. The next thing we discussed last year was Google Fiber. We've been very successful with Google Fiber. It looks like it has been installed in the majority of the communities. You're already able to sign up, sign up for service and the information is up there if you would like to do so. If you have not received Google Fiber service, there may have been some construction plans, whether a water main lay or some street overlay that was getting ready to be done in your neighborhood. If for whatever reason you do not have Google Service provider in your neighborhood, please reach out to us so we can make sure we get that scheduled for you. And some other topics that'll be addressed today that were addressed last year was the Leon Valley Historical Society. The city continues to work with them. We are going to propose some home rule charter amendments. That will be presented by the mayor later on. You will hear about the Bandera Road, the update on Bandera Road project. And then again, we will be addressing our special events. That kind of concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I can always be found at City Hall, or you can go to our city website, or you can contact us at 210-684-1391. And my extension is at 219. Do y'all have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. On time. All right.
So this one's to move forward, this one's to go back. Move forward, back. Technology's not my strong suit, but that's okay. All right. So the next agenda item for our town hall meeting is update on the Bandera Road project. And we have Chad Gardner, who is the TechDOT representative, who has been the consultant from Half &amp; Associates, who's been putting together this, helping to put together this redevelopment project. Along with, we have the City of San Antonio that will be presenting this after, this morning, Josh Jashwick. And I believe there's someone else, Jay Loudon, who will be presenting as well. So I'm not sure how we start. The first, Chad Gardner is going to be, they're all going to be online today. They're not able to be here. Chad Gardner's from Dallas. And so is there a way that we can start his presentation? It's just about a 10-minute presentation? I'm not sure. Is it something here that I do or something that y'all do? Yeah. Oh, and we have Councilor Sandoval here today. She's going to welcome the, present the San Antonio part, or start off. Yes, thank you. Oops. I wasn't sure if you were going to be online or here because I knew they were going to be online. Great. Thank you. So good to see you. All right. So if we could get the, okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, my understanding was that Chad was going to go first. Is that? Right. First, okay. And then we have Councilor Anna Sandoval, who's been working tirelessly with the City of Leon Valley and TechDOT for this, on this project for years. And she's going to be here to introduce the San Antonio team. Again, this is our.
Morning. I'm Chad Gardner with Half Associates. And I'm the consultant project manager for TechDOT State Highway 16 Bandera Road feasibility study from I-410 to Loop 1604. I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Riley for inviting us to provide a brief update on the status of TechDOT's feasibility study. We appreciate her involvement and leadership throughout this study. I'd like to start by providing a brief overview of the study's evaluation process and efforts that have occurred to date. The concept analysis process started in 2019, but TechDOT completed data collection and an existing conditions assessment of issues to address along the corridor. Also, early community outreach identified priorities, goals, and recommendations. All this information was presented at TechDOT's first public meetings held in December 2019. In 2019, TechDOT also established a technical work group comprised of city, county, and agency representatives, and a planning team comprised of community representatives. TechDOT is also a participating member in the Bandera Road Task Force, which is co-chaired by Mayor Riley and San Antonio Councilwoman Anna Sandoval. And it includes other elected officials, city representatives, MEA, and Northside ISD. Since 2019, TechDOT has continued to coordinate with these work groups to help steer the concept development process. The existing conditions assessment verified several problems that the study is trying to address. Evaluation of crash data identified the crash rate on Bandera Road is four to seven times higher than the statewide average for similar roadways. Next, the adjacent roadway network is disjointed and provides limited alternative routes to Bandera Road, increasing traffic and turning movements at key intersections. The existing Bandera Road traffic varies from 40,000 to more than 75,000 vehicles per day, which results in significant delay during peak periods. To travel the six-mile corridor, it takes about 28 minutes during the AM peak and about 40 minutes during the PM peak. And more people are coming to the region, whether Bandera Road is improved or not. The Alamo Area Metropolitan Planning Organization forecasts that 1.5 million people will move to the AAMPO 4 County region between the years 2015 and 2045. This forecasted regional growth is anticipated to increase the year 2047 traffic demand on Bandera Road to 70,000 to 118,000 vehicles per day, which is similar to volumes seen today on the SH151 freeway. In 2020, TechDOT utilized early community feedback and the existing conditions assessment to identify and evaluate numerous potential improvement concepts to intersections, roadway configuration, access management, multimodal accommodations, network connectivity, and transportation demand management strategies. TechDOT held a business forum to inform and receive feedback from adjacent businesses. And the initial universal concepts was shared with the project's work groups in two virtual concept workshops. The initial concepts were refined based on feedback and evaluated to identify potentially viable solutions for the corridor. In June 2021, the initial universal concepts and potential viable concept recommendations were shared with the public through an online virtual public meeting. Throughout 2021, TechDOT has evaluated and refined the various concepts based on the results of detailed traffic studies and community feedback. Community input has helped to identify, refine, and evaluate potential concepts. Based on feedback, top priorities include improved mobility, safety, and operations. Community feedback has also recommended improved transit service, continuous bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and improved street network that provides alternative routes, better street lighting, and improved access management of driveways and intersections. Additionally, the community has emphasized developing a corridor with a sense of place that businesses, patrons, and residents want to utilize. All these suggested concepts are components of an overall implementation plan for the Bandera Road corridor. However, today I'd like to focus on the bicycle, pedestrian improvements, and roadway concepts. The study has received significant feedback to provide continuous pedestrian and bicycle accommodations along Bandera Road and across the major intersections. Based on the traffic volumes and speeds, shared use paths are recommended where pedestrians and cyclists share the path. This is similar to how the Leon Creek Greenway Trails work. However, a shared use path along Bandera Road would be offset outside the roadway. Typically, shared use paths vary between 10 and 12 feet wide, and they can be located on one or both sides of Bandera Road. If a shared use path is only provided on one side, then a sidewalk would still be needed on the other side of Bandera Road. Today, all proposed roadway concepts evaluated by TechDOT have included a shared use path on both sides of Bandera Road. TechDOT will continue to coordinate with the cities regarding potential connections to adjacent neighborhoods and parks. In 2021, the study focused on evaluating potentially viable concepts, which included two roadway concepts. We will first discuss the boulevard concept, which was recommended for consideration by 2018 UTSA planning study performed for Leon Valley. The boulevard concept would require at least three main lanes and two-lane frontage roads in each direction. Raised medians would be provided between the main lanes and frontage roads, with the main lanes accommodating longer trips and left-turning traffic, and the frontage roads handling local trips and right-turning traffic. To reduce the boulevard width, minimal median widths are proposed. The boulevard's proposed typical right-of-way width varies between 200 and 205 feet, and would increase up to 245 feet at various ramp and intersection locations. Bandera Road's existing right-of-way width varies with a typical width of 180 feet. Previous community feedback noted a desire for enhanced landscaping and trees along Bandera Road. However, due to safety clear zones and minimal median widths, additional right-of-way width beyond what is shown in this image would likely be needed for trees or larger shrubs within Bandera Road's right-of-way. The second potentially viable roadway concept evaluated was the parkway concept. For Bandera Road, an at-grade parkway would need four lanes in each direction based on the year 2047 forecasted traffic demand. Additionally, restricted crossing U-turn intersections, also known as R-cuts, are recommended between Seneca and Prue Road to minimize intersection width, increase capacity, and improve intersection safety. For your reference, an R-cut intersection exists on Bandera Road at FM 1560 north of Loop 1604. The parkway's center median width could be up to 32 feet wide between intersections. The typical right-of-way width is between 170 and 180 feet, and this width would increase up to 215 feet wide at intersections. Overall, the parkway provides opportunities for enhanced landscaping and aesthetic treatments. However, any landscaping within TechDOT's right-of-way would need to meet TechDOT's safety and maintenance requirements, and it may require an agreement with the cities. As part of our 2021 evaluation, we determine right-of-way need, potential building displacements, and probable construction and right-of-way costs. The boulevard concept would require 30 to 35 acres of additional right-of-way, while the parkway concept would require three to six acres additional right-of-way. In terms of building displacements, the boulevard would potentially displace between 36 and 50 buildings, while the parkway would likely displace three to five buildings. When evaluating probable costs in year 2021, the combined construction and right-of-way costs for the boulevard concept are estimated between 345 and 425 million, while the combined parkway concept costs are estimated between 160 to 190 million. These comparisons focus on the segment from Seneca to north of Prue Road, and the variations are due to different options considered with each concept. Traffic models and simulations using the forecasted year 2047 traffic demand were developed to evaluate the no-build or no-improvements condition, along with the proposed boulevard and parkway concepts. Various operational measures were evaluated. However, the results shown on this chart focus on the percent of the year 2047 traffic demand met along the corridor during the AM and PM peak periods. A higher percentage of total demand met typically reflects less total corridor delay and more vehicles using the corridor. If no improvements are done to Bandera Road, by the year 2047, the corridor will facilitate only 34% of the total demand in the PM peak period. This percentage could increase up to 57% if a boulevard concept is constructed. However, the greatest percentage of demand met is observed with the parkway concept for both peak periods, with up to 82% demand met in the PM peak period. Ideally, we would like to get the demand met as close to 100% as possible. Therefore, in addition to the at-grade boulevard and at-grade parkway concepts, the study is also currently evaluating various grade separation configurations to determine their impact to traffic operations, right-of-way, and costs. Moving forward, TechDOT will continue to utilize community feedback to further refine and evaluate viable concepts. A second business forum is being held on March 30th, and TechDOT is planning a third public meeting in the second half of 2022, where viable concept layouts and evaluation results will be provided. After the public meeting, our goal is to identify the project's preferred implementation plan, which will allow the schematic design and environmental studies to commence through the year 2024. During the schematic and environmental process, TechDOT will continue community engagement to refine and finalize the schematic design. We sincerely appreciate everyone's time and interest on the Bandera Road feasibility study. Your involvement is critical to the project's success. For anyone who would like to be added to our project database, please feel free to stop by our table at today's meeting. For additional information, please visit www.techdot.gov and type in the keywords "SH16 Bandera Road" in the top right search bar. Any questions or comments can be submitted to the Bandera Road project team at any time during project development via email to banderaro.com. You may also contact Laura Lopez, who is TechDOT's Public Information Officer, at 210-615-5839. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you at our upcoming public meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Lots of information this morning, but thank you for that, Chad. I know he's in Dallas this morning. But does everyone have this brochure? I wanted to introduce William Long. He's with Paneski and Camarillo, who is their public outreach consultant for TechDOT on this project. And he's here today. And he's passing out these newsletters from last fall. And at the very back, there is a little, on the backside says "Keep in Touch", and there's a QR code and all the information that Mr. Gardner just shared with you. So again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to use that as a resource. We do have a business forum, so if there's any businesses here today. We have a business forum next Wednesday, March 30th, at City Church. One at 7:30 in the morning that Councilor Anna Sandoval's going to lead. And then I will be there at 2:30 in the afternoon to lead that, to help lead that business forum, to hear from the businesses along the corridor. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Anna Sandoval, who has been wonderful to work with. Councilor Sandoval, come. It's been a, yes, let's, couldn't have done it without her. She's such a strong advocate for Bandera Road. And I think you have more mileage than we do, right, along the corridor? But thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I thought you were calling me old, but thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here with our neighbors in Leon Valley. My name is Anna Sandoval. I represent District 7, which you know gives a big hug to Leon Valley, north, south, east, and west. I'm accompanied today by my district director, Ms. Vanessa Chavez, who's there. I would, I would say normally, if you have any constituent concerns, to send them to her, but we don't have to worry about that here. So you send them to Mayor Riley. Well, it's good to see you. As Mayor Riley said, we've been working together for a few years on this project. Almost the moment I got into office, we decided this would be one of our priorities. So TechDOT has been a great partner as well. We went to them. And so let's, I'm just going to take a step back and say the reason we're working so hard on this together is we want to get on that list of projects that get funded by the state. And for us to get on that list, we have to have a plan. And for us to have a plan, we wanted to make sure we were part of that plan and that you were part of that plan. Not that it was made in isolation without you. So like they say, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago or right now. So that's why we're still in this planning phase. And we thank everyone for their patience because we know it's going to be a while before the road gets built, but we're doing what we have to do to get in line, to get our money, to make that road what we want it to be. So TechDOT and Half &amp; Associates and Pazneken Kamadiu have all been great, the consultants that work with TechDOT. Now, the city, in parallel to that, also took on another initiative. And we call this a corridor study. And you would think a corridor study, that sounds like a road. Maybe they're also looking at the traffic. Uh-uh, we're not looking at the traffic. What we're looking at, at the city, in our planning department, is basically what does the road look like? the road look like once you get off the street? Once you get off the sidewalks? What types of buildings are there? How does it connect to the neighborhoods in the area? And we wanted to do that at the same time that TechDOT was doing their study. We thought it made sense to work together. So that is what you will hear about today, an update on that study, what we call the corridor study. And Josh Jasky, who lives out in this area, who has to use the Bandera Corridor to get to work, will introduce the topic. So anyway, it is a pleasure to be invited again to your town hall and to continue working with you, Mayor, and your community. Thank you very much.
All right. I hear him in the background, but I don't hear him. You know what I'm saying? It's technology. We have to be patient, but it's going to get working here.
Great. Sorry about that, everybody. So as we were mentioning over the past three years, we've embarked on this collaborative community planning process with the city of Leon Valley, TechDOT, and other regional partners in the area for Bandera Road Corridor. With the help of the community and all of these partners, we've identified several opportunities to improve the whole system around Bandera Corridor. So we're not just taking that approach towards traffic, we're looking at the whole system of how that corridor interacts with our city, with Leon Valley, and the whole region. And so while they're focusing on leading efforts on traffic, we're looking at land use, we're looking at sustainable and innovative land use approaches.
You know, Mark, if we're not able to make it work, I think...
We'll be in attendance next week at the TechDOT Business Forum. And what we're doing right now is working to complete our full draft with internal review partners, and what we're looking at right now is finalizing all those recommendations that we've received from the community related to land use, transportation improvements, public input, and fiscal impact analysis and cost data. So what Jay Loudon is going to talk about today are a few of those topics. And of course, as this plan comes to fruition in the future and is finalized, we'll be coming back to all of our community friends, such as Leon Valley, to give y'all a little update when that time comes. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Jay Loudon, and he's going to talk a little bit about what's in our plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you for, to both you and the councilwoman, for the introduction of what this plan is. You know, it can be a little bit technical, but I think that we can talk through things here in a way that makes it pretty understandable. So we're talking about land use plans first. So what is that? This is what the city of San Antonio will use as long-range guidance for zoning and other land-related regulatory work. So it's not something that happens immediately, it's the kind of thing that's implemented over the next 30-plus years. And just as a reminder, this work is for the city of San Antonio, not directly for the city of Leon Valley. Of course, what happens in San Antonio affects Leon Valley as well. So the genesis of this future land use plan was public input, and so that guided the incorporation of a lot of new mixed-use categories that don't exist in this area yet. It focuses on four main areas, so that's the intersections of Bandera Road with 1604, 410, the French Creek Crossing, and the mainland Leon Creek area. All four of those are mixed-use centers, which will incorporate transit-oriented development, and also French Creek and mainland are opportunities for trail-oriented developments. 1604 and 410 right now, of course, are regional mixed-use centers, regional in this case, meaning that they draw people from around a larger region. So the current density of those areas is capped, but modified to incorporate mixed use. Between those four areas, your development will continue, not dissimilar to how it is now, but with the change to mixed-use categories instead of the single-use commercial that most of it features right now. The density of those categories has been very carefully stepped to protect existing single-family neighborhoods, and none of those are changed whatsoever by the plan. So main points here for this slide, first is that density has really increased only very slightly and almost exclusively at the nodes that we're calling out here. But what I'll say about that is that the actual development density and intensity of the area overall is considerably lower than what current zoning allows. So we do expect that just with current zoning, with no changes, there will be increased development density over the 30-year planning period, regardless of this new land use plan. Also, the changes primarily shift the mix of uses slightly, not dramatically, but slightly away from retail and slightly towards residential, and that's mostly in the form of more diverse housing choices along the corridor. So as the area is built out, we do expect, overall, more retail and restaurant and other service development that is currently there, but the growth of housing will be a little bit more, a little bit faster and more substantial. Office space, we also think, will grow more quickly than retail, but it's a much smaller component of the overall future score footage on the corridor, and of course, right now is almost non-existent. Fourth is that overall density will remain low on the corridor in comparison to downtown, the medical center, and any other dense areas of town. You know, just kind of historically speaking, Bandera Road has transitioned from a rural to a suburban character in most places. By the end of the 30-year planning period, we think that that transition should be complete along the length of the corridor, but it will not have progressed substantially to a more organized character, especially because we don't expect many changes, if any, in the large areas of single-family residential. So one of the big questions with any new land use plan is how it compares not just to the previous land use plan, which in many areas here, there wasn't one, but also the current zoning. The reason for that is that the new land use plan is used to guide future zoning decisions. So what you can see here is an analysis of current zoning versus the proposed land use categorizing, versus the proposed land use categories, and the color coding represents whether the proposed land use is an increase, a decrease, or no change to the category. Color-wise, the bright green is park or drainage drain, and neither of those is going to change at all. The darker blue-green is by far the biggest category, that's the land which is unaffected by the plan. Most of that is the single-family residential. Purple and orange are the two categories to look at. The orange means that the zoning right now is higher than what we think should be there, while the purple represents categories that are actually increased in the plan. Overall, percentage-wise, there's relatively little change on those fronts, and a big part of that is because really the focus of the plan is more on incorporating mixed-use land uses than it is in changing any of the current densities. So as we mentioned before, the report incorporates the aesthetic and sustainability features that we've discussed throughout the project, especially those points, which, we had a first phase of this project, which some of y'all who participated last year would have seen that the tech memorandum that represented those. So we've had support for all of that information. As mentioned previously, the two mixed-use centers internal to Bandera have trail-oriented development possibilities, and that's been one of the more successful development paradigms in San Antonio in recent years. This slide shows some of the recommended features, including a shared use path, green space that's adjacent to Bandera, much more heavily vegetated edges, including lots more trees, and amenities for pedestrians and bicyclists and transit riders along the corridor. So the major preferred development paradigm, particularly in those nodes that I've called out, is what you see on the right side of this image, and that's a mixed-use development which is built around transit. So what that means is that it's internally oriented around an open green or a hardscape space. Buildings, instead of parking, is what's along the roadway itself, along Bandera Road. There's access to the shared use paths along Bandera, as well as where possible, and you see here on the right side of this image, of access to greenway trails, and then stormwater detention, which is required for most developments in this area now. That's incorporated as a landscape feature, not as just a concrete detention pond. And also, the landscaping is more dense and more heavily treed than is common current development. The plan also talks about some basics for intersections, and these are intended to increase safety, as well as really just to improve everybody's experiences. So it includes features like well-marked crosswalks, including separate crossing markings for bicycles, islands for mid-crossing refuges, so that you can cross halfway on what is, you know, already a pretty wide frontage for Bandera Road. You can cross halfway, have a safe refuge, and then cross the rest of the way. At-grade crossings for pedestrians, so that people don't have to go up and down over curbs, and then placement of transit stops at the intersections, which are close to the crosswalks, and also directly connected to the new multi-use paths. We've got a transportation section to our plan as well, and the focus for that, of course, with TechDOT taking the focus on Bandera Road, that lets us look more at the connecting network, and that's both roadways as well as bicycle and sidewalk projects. So by looking at trip generators, so where people are coming from, and prioritizing areas of higher and more dense population, we were able to establish some project prioritization from those perspectives. So this kind of key system you see here helps us locate individual projects. So we've got five priority bicycle connectivity projects, three trail projects, and four sidewalk projects, plus the improvements that TechDOT will be proposing to Bandera Road itself, and all of those need further study, so we've identified those to be studied later on. Perhaps as importantly, however, the report addresses and further develops, there were a series of 10 potential arterial roadway network connections identified by the TechDOT team that could improve the traffic situation on Bandera Road itself. The top four options, we have taken those further within our own study, looking at how those might be routed, along with a qualitative analysis of how that impacts the areas around them. So our next steps, so we've completed, we've partially completed the internal review process that is still ongoing. We've got a final public meeting to host, so that'll be another opportunity for the public in general to see in a little bit more detail than what we've been able to present to you today, the content of the plan, and to receive feedback from that, so that we can then finalize the draft, which incorporates those comments and that feedback from the public meeting. And then finally, after that, we'll be able to publish a public draft of the entire plan. So that's what we've got today. Josh, do we do questions at this point?
Sure, Mayor. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Let me ask, are there any questions from the participants in our center this morning on the Bandera Road project, presented by the city of San Antonio? Okay, seeing none, I think that's a lot of information, and we will process it, and please let us know when the next public meeting is, and we'll make sure that our citizens are invited to that as well. So, all righty, thank you all very much. Let's give the city of San Antonio, show them our appreciation for their efforts to improve the Bandera Road Corridor. It's going to be great. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Josh, all righty.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care. Okay, we are a little bit behind, but that's all right. We're just going to keep on plugging away. The next agenda item is an update on the red light camera initiative, citizen input on safety uses of red light camera funds, and Mayor Protem Bradshaw, would you like to lead this discussion? Oh, there you go, and we've got Chief, excuse me, Chief David Gonzalez, who is going to actually do the presentation for the red light camera. Thank you.
Okay, so I know we're about 15 minutes behind, so maybe we'll try and speed through this a little bit and catch up, but basically, just to introduce this item, Counselor Orozco and Josh Stevens and I went up to Austin last April. There was a House Bill 1209, which would be to eliminate red light cameras completely. They're already banned in Texas, but cities who already had a red light camera program like ourselves were allowed to keep them through the end of the program. Four. I can't hear you. Four at the state.
Sorry, there's four in the state.
Oh, four cities that have, yeah, I said we're one of them, sorry. Yeah, there's four cities that still have the cameras, correct. But that being said, so the plan was to get rid of the cameras completely until the expiration. The previous council extended that till 2037, so obviously, we have a long time. So this new House bill would have just said, no grandfather clause, the cameras are extended. Unfortunately, it didn't get very far, and we went and met with the Transportation Committee, and it kind of died in the legislative session, so next year, it could be brought back again. But this agenda item, Chief has some slides to talk about it, and basically, to get to the gist of it, we have $600,000 in our reserve fund, and some of the ideas of what do we want to spend that money on for traffic improvement. Want me to do the slides?
Yes, sir. Go to the next slide, please. Green button, there you go. The program was implemented in 2018. Since the start of the program, 327,000, almost 328 citations have been issued. The program has brought in $10 million. The program was never intended to bring in revenue. It was intended to change behavior for drivers on Bandera Road and some of the intersecting streets. As Counselor Bradshaw said, we've got $600,000 in our reserve fund. Go to the next slide. The money that comes in is split up into two tiers. Tier one is administration of the cameras and everybody that it takes to support the program. Tier two is traffic safety, and that ends up being split with the state of Texas. The city gets 50%, the state of Texas gets 50%. This is what your red light camera program pays for. Notice the 100% funding of those positions, and then the breakdown, everything from 25, I think, to 15? Go to the next slide. Right, 15%. So right there, the traffic safety program, it pays for six traffic officers. Next slide. This is what it cost us. Every intersection where we have a red light camera costs $66,500 a month. $798,000. The money that's generated has bought us police cars, radar units, lights, fuel, tasers, radios. By the way, one of our radios is like $4,500 all by itself. Traffic vests, light wands, flares, jaws of life for the fire department, traffic safety signage, the blinking stop signs, the speed alert signs in the neighborhoods, crosswalk over on Heebner Road, I believe was like 172,000 that it cost the city, red light camera bought it. We have traffic enforcement program, we pay overtime to our officers to do traffic in the neighborhoods. Next slide. This is the wish list. This is, these are some of the things we've heard that citizens of Leon Valley want. Improved signage, streetlight at Forest Ledge, I think CPS took care of that for us. Everst and Adair, there's going to be a traffic study, see what this mirror would do, see if it'll help out or create us more problems. There has to be a study. A four-way stop at Seneca Drive and Sundial, and the things that didn't make this list was a new crosswalk in front of the library and more traffic signage in the neighborhood. Okay, there's money there. We're here to discuss what we can do with it. Please provide us your ideas.
So if you go to your Mentimeter that you scan on your phone now, there's, if you hit next, down at the bottom, it says next. The first question is, other possible ideas, sorry, thank you, Chief, for that presentation, other possible ideas to use funds for traffic safety. So if you have any other things that you, that were on the list, or you agree with the things, or disagree, whatever. the things, or disagree, whatever, you can put them in there. This is just an open-ended question with 250 characters, so, that you can put, and then you hit submit.
If you can tell, please raise your hand. We have staff in the back. If you take a look at the screen, those are some of the comments being currently posted right now on the screen. Please, you're breaking cheesy bad language.
Yeah, and as you do it in real time, you see that your answers are popping up on the screen. Some of the ideas, let's read some of them. Oh, I can't read the first one. It says, "Evers and Posh, replace stealth police cars with identifiable police cars, bigger signs showing slowdowns on Heebner Road. Speed bumps on Rue Sophie, fix/update the crosswalk at the library. Speed bumps in Monterobles, police salaries. Speed bumps and streetlights at Rue Sophie, repair damaged roads, as identified the city of Leon Valley." Oh, they're agreeing with that once we identified. Crosswalks on Evers, restrapping roadways, fix/update the crosswalk. Replace library crosswalk signage and lights currently not functional. Soft crosswalk at Chaparral and Heebner to improve traffic, turning and pedestrian across there. I agree with four-way stop at Seneca and Sundial. Like what's on the list and remain in favor of the cameras. Get rid of stealth police cars. Okay, so you can kind of see, there's...
Stay open Monday.
Okay, and, yeah, so this question will stay open until Monday. So if you think of other things, or other people want to chime in, you can do that, and then we'll compile the answers and see what's...
Is there a color code or something?
It's, just to, yeah. The green, are there good ideas? No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Councilor. Do appreciate it. Great ideas. All righty, so we will certainly move on those ideas and, again, try to decide how to spend your money to improve our safety in our community. All right, the next agenda item is an update on the capital improvements project. We have Councilor Ray Orozco, Olin Yornell, Capital Facilities Oversight Advisory Committee Chair, and I believe we have Melinda Moritz, our Public Works Director, who's been also, is she here?
Yes, she is.
Okay, here to help present this item. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. Good morning, y'all, and thank you so much for showing up. I'm here to introduce Capital Facilities, actually, the Chairman, so he can give you an oversight of what's going on. But I want to take this opportunity to say that I hope this becomes a trend where we are able to introduce more committees, either on the Mayor's breakfast, coffee with breakfast, we can introduce a lot of the members. Because I tell you, in a personal note, I just did my volunteering hours, and for the past year and a half, I volunteered over 1,200 hours. And as much hours as I put into our city council, we're still not able to, I'm not able to make a good judgment unless we have the committees give us a good recommendation of what they research and what they ask for. And the Capital Facilities is no exception. They do a fantastic job, and I do want to recognize some of the members that are in there right now, and I don't want me to take that away from you. And I got Eric Mata, Daniela Bolton, Liz Malloy, Adam Castillo, William Johnson, Drew Power, Secretary Ivan Orozco, and Vice Chair Robin Johnson, and I introduce Chair. The Staff Liaison is Melinda Moritz, and the Council Liaison is Councilor Jett Hefner and Councilor Josh Stevens. I wanted to say how important it is for the recommendations that they give city council, and the leadership on this committee is fantastic. I think that, like I said, in the future, let me go back a little bit, the future, we can introduce to you the Police Advisory Group, we can, the zoning commissioners. And I know we're running short time, so just let me introduce the Chairman. He has been here since the 70s. He was a volunteer fireman. He has been in city council and served in multiple, multiple committees, and he definitely lets us know what this committee is about, and what this committee is going, and what city council needs to do in order for us to be successful. So I'd like to introduce the Chairman, Olin Yornell.
Mr. Orozco, would you be our button pusher this morning? Apparently, we need somebody. I'll try to read from my script, and you punch the buttons. How's that? We already got it? In addition, Mr. Orozco, would you please be our timekeeper and give me a signal at...
You're already past your time.
So apparently, we're finished. I'll go through this as quickly as I can, Madam City Manager, Dr. Crystal. The purpose of this committee is to provide an update to the city council and the citizens on the progress and activities of the Capital Facilities Oversight Committee. The committee members have already been introduced by Commissioner, or Chairman, Councilman Orozco. Some of the background is to meet the requirements to update certain city facilities to comply with American for Disabilities Act, which was introduced in, Linda, 2010? So we're already a few years behind. The council is considering renovations and funding mechanisms to pay for the facility's improvements, i.e. certificates of obligation or general obligation bonds. These mechanisms will impact the city's budget and consequently, all the citizens of Leon Valley. The projects that are being under consideration are the Public Works Building, the Leon Valley Community Pool on Posh Road, the Forest Oaks Community Pool on Evers Road, and the Library Annex, and the Raymond Renskes Park Large Restroom. In addition to the ADA deficiencies, most of these facilities are old, dilapidated, don't meet current building code requirements, and don't have updated technology, and are not energy efficient. To obtain citizens' involvement and ensure transparency and monitor spending, the city council created the Capital Facilities Oversight Committee. The committee's inaugural meeting was on June the 9th, 2021, and we have met monthly since that time, except for December, which was the holidays, and February, which was canceled due to the fact that our guest speaker contracted COVID. Our next meeting is, the meetings are held on fourth Monday of each month at the conference center next door. The next meeting will be held on April the 25th, because the lady that's going to be our guest speaker is, has a calendar conflict, and is still not able to make our schedule. All citizens are encouraged to attend to bring forth your points of view and solutions. We want to hear you, from you, about your solutions. We don't want to just hear that you don't like what's happening, so bring us your solutions. And they'll be reviewed and discussed here today. The progress to date, committee has determined which of these facilities is a need or a want as follows. A need, the Public Works Facility. A needs assessment of this facility was performed, and it was recommended that a new building be constructed at a cost of approximately $2 million. That building would be just on the corner outside this building. It may be a new administration office and some other facilities for the staff. The current large building would be remodeled to become more efficient for the entire crew. And the once department would be both pools, the library annex, and the park restroom. These facilities are not ADA compliant, and that aspect must be addressed during this program. These facilities are amenities, and while contributing to the overall quality of life of our city, might otherwise be considered as a want. The park restroom has been remanded back to the Park Commission. It is recommended that a grant be sought from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, TPWD, for construction of a new restroom that meets ADA guidelines. The cost of that building would be approximately $300,000 to be shared with TPWD. The next item is the library annex. We have collaborated, we are collaborating with the library director, friends of the library, and the library board of directors on the concept of a new facility. It would incorporate the Leon Valley archives and accommodate to use book sales that they have annually, twice annually. This new building would cost approximately $300,000, and it's recommended for bond funding. Now we're down to the pools. The pools are under review by the Park Commission. You see what we've done here, we've moved most of this into the Park Commission and put it on their shoulders. They are to make recommendations for renovations or demolition, including recommendations for bond funding. The pending citizens' bond survey is out now, has been mailed, it's available online, and the answers are due back on April the 15th. Once received, the committee will tally the results and make recommendations to the council based on the input from the citizens. Then there'll be a finalized opinion of probable cause for each project presented to the city council. The city council will place approved projects on the ballot for voters for May 2023. The decision was made to move it to May, so we would have less congestion with the presidential election coming up in November. As I understand it, anytime you put an item on the ballot, you have to subtract three months from the time you start, because it takes three months advance notice to get it put on the ballot through the county or the state process. Is that right? Okay. So the election will be, is now being set at 2023 election. The committee invites and encourages all citizens to follow the progress through the upcoming city newsletters on the website at LeonValleyTexas.gov, and in weekly editions of the e-news that comes through your computer. And the citizens are encouraged to send their opinions on the renovations to these facilities to survey@LeonValleyTexas.gov, or mail them to City of Leon Valley, Bond Survey, 6400 Elverdy Road, Leon Valley, Texas, 78238. This is a C statement. And that concludes the presentation. I guess we wait for questions at the end of the whole process? Is that what you want to do?
We have time.
We have time? A while ago, I was in trouble, now I've got time. Okay. Okay, do we have any questions from anyone in the audience?
I just want to remind you, everybody, there are surveys on that back table, so if you would like, we need to work to the mail, you're more than welcome to grab the one on that back table. There's also the barcode you might need to...
There is a question at the table over here on the back corner.
There you go.
Please stand up and give us your question, and state your name, please.
Thank you, Chair Yornell. My name is Evan Bowle in the Barcelona office. So the question I have, I assume many of us have, is upon the submission of our surveys regarding the projects, how soon would the decision be put on a ballot, or what is the direction the city may take in perhaps going ahead with the projects that they can pay for outside of the bond?
So the question, I understand, is when will the issue be put on the ballot? Is that correct?
That is correct. Or how fast can we go with some of the projects outside of the ballot?
The issue would be put on the ballot in May of 2023, and the option of going outside the ballot process is zero based on available funds of the current city budget.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Yes, ma'am. You have a phone there, I mean, a microphone right there by you. Please leave your microphone, so everyone can hear us.
My name is Helen McGrady.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm curious, the monies that come in from that, the red light cameras, they fund so much? If that red light camera money wasn't there, how would those be funded?
She's asking a question about the funds that come from red light cameras? And we'll let Dr. Crystal answer that question.
So the answer is, you can pay for them out of general fund reserves. The fact of the matter is, is those officer positions were added after you got the red light camera funds. And so the likelihood of them being funded out of general fund reserve is less likely. You don't have the funds sitting in general fund reserve. You're sitting about $2.5 million currently. You should be sitting closer to about $3 million. And so if that red light camera funds go away, then more often than not, those officer positions would go away.
I guess in that regard, is there any alternate? I sleep Sacramento, I'm resident over at Seneca Street. So I guess in regards to her question, so how, what do you fund? Are there any alternate revenue streams that are being considered?
No. No, I mean, we have alternate, you know, you pay property taxes, you have to increase your property taxes. You can take a look, we try all the time, we have economic development, so to look at sales tax, so paying attention to the retail along Bandero Road. So you do have other sales tax and revenue streams that do come in, but this is a revenue stream that came in. Y'all were adding about 26 officers prior to the red light cameras, and now y'all are up to about 41 officers. And so without those red light camera funds, it would make it very difficult to pay for those positions.
Is this one? Hi, Tina Chason, Varstokes. I would like to know, when it comes to being ADA compliant on the pool issue, has there been any kind of study that would prioritize one pool over the other for a cost-effective means of updating?
As, there's not been such a study at this time, but they would be, the two pools, whatever is decided, whatever information comes back from the public, for the renovation or demolition of either or both pools, or whatever the situation turns out to be, there will be a complete study as to the requirements that we're charged to meet, and we will meet those requirements. So it's going to be a bit of expensive, but we are already 12 years behind, and the question is, where do we go from here? We cannot continually stay behind the eight ball. Ms. Moritz, do you have any additional comments?
Now. So we did a study on just renovating the Forest Oaks Pool as it is, just to bring it up to ADA compliance. That cost was between $900,000 and $1 million. So the choice is, do you spend that much money on that facility just to bring it up to code, or do you demolish it and do something different? We looked at bringing in modular buildings instead of renovating the building that's there, and it, just weirdly, it's cheaper. It's like $700,000 to bring it up. So the Leon Valley Community Pool, bringing that one up to standard is not as hard, because it's not a brick-constructed building, they're just stick and wood, basically. And so that one, if you just demolish the buildings and fix some of the patio areas in the parking lot, that's probably going to cost you around $500,000 to $600,000, and we would bring in a modular building for that. So we have done that kind of a study, but then the issue came up is, why do we have two pools? Do we need two pools? If we don't have two pools, which pool would you want to keep? And so that's what's on the survey that's going out to the citizens, is to find out what it is you want to do and how much money you want to spend to do this.
Any additional questions? Councilman Orozco, how are we doing with our time?
Really good.
Oh, the Mayor's asking how, to discuss how we're going to set the individual items upon a ballot. They would be individually and stand alone, one would not have an effect on the other. So this final choice would be at the ballot box. Is that what you're asking about?
The committee's been discussing.
Yes, the committee's been discussing. Yes, the committee's been discussing that. We're open and transparent about what we're doing, and we want to have your input because you're going to be buying this. We have been in this city now for, these projects are, have been here for about 50 to 60 years, and they're getting at the end of their life cycle, plus the ADA requirements that we're not meeting. So we're, we really cannot ignore taking care of these items. Since we've turned everything over to the Park Commission, I want to ask Chairman Christensen if you have any further input in the, in the process here.
Well, Ellen, thanks for shining a spotlight on me. I wasn't really prepared to answer questions today. But yes, the Park Commission has been discussing these items in depth, and we feel that there is a real need to correct these deficiencies. But beyond that, we are also eagerly awaiting the results of the survey so we can make our recommendations based on the survey itself.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Bradshaw.
Just on? Check. Okay. Will Bradshaw, Monorobles. I just wanted more of a statement than a, than a question, and it's to the timeliness of this project and these approvals to getting it on the ballot, the importance. Because as we know, if we do a bond right now, interest rates are still pretty low, but as people may be aware, the Fed is raising interest rates. And so the cost of these projects, if interest rates continue to rise and we fund these over years, the improvements, if we don't lock in rates now, it could cost a lot more in the future. So it's important that we consider these items quickly and get them on the ballot. I would propose to try and get them on the November ballot, if at all possible, so that we can move forward with it and lock in rates on a bond. Similarly, you know, the council recently refinanced current bonds and saved millions of dollars by refinancing those bonds because of the low interest rates.
Yes, the, the May 2023 date was set prior to the recent action by the Fed Board. So it makes sense to try to get this thing underway as soon as possible. Councilman Roscoe's given me the signal. We've got two minutes left. Do we have any more questions? I want to give some time back to the mayor so we don't get in her doghouse. Thank you all.
Thank you all. We do appreciate it. You know, I'm just reminded at our first town hall meeting in 2011, we discussed the renovation of City Hall and the adding of the fire department. And so it was through this grassroots process that we were able to gain consensus. We had a committee, and the citizens in May of 2012 voted to raise their taxes, $7 million is what we borrowed, to build a new fire station and renovate City Hall with, which included the administration building and the police department. So we're kind of repeating that process, and the vote was 67% for that renovation. So anyway, I congratulate the citizens of Leon Valley again. You're the boss. You decide what you'd like in your city. So thank you, Mr. Yornell. Okay, the next one is Mr. Jed Hefner. He came up with this idea about the time capsule. We have a couple out there in front of our city building, but he wanted to talk about the next time capsule. Councilor Jed Hefner, let's welcome him, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a fun part of the agenda day because we got this one, and then right after this, Councilor Bradshaw's going to talk about city events. So we get all the kind of fun minutia of Bandera Road and red light cameras and everything, and now we get to do the fun part. So Leon Valley is a city that, over our history, has been really rich in our history. We have a historical society. We've got a tremendous community of citizens here who have been long-term residents and love the history of our city. And so, I don't have a clicker. Oh, I do have a clicker. There we go. There we go. Um, hang on. Somebody else clicking it? Okay, there we go. So these are the two time capsules we have now. They're in, just outside City Hall, and the next one's to be opened about 10 years from now, which is really, really exciting. It was originally buried before I was born in 1982, so dating myself a little bit. But I love this idea of preserving our history, preserving our heritage as a city. And so one of the big questions we want to ask today of the citizens that are here is, A, do you want to do a time capsule? Is this something that people are still interested in? You know, this was really big in the 80s, 90s. It kind of tailed off in the 2000s, right? Now, a lot of our world changed in 2001. After 9/11, we know that kind of a lot of people's priorities and mindset shifted. But the question is, are we still interested in preserving our heritage? Now, some other things that we've learned over, so, sorry. So first question is this. I don't know if we have this on the mentee or not.
Yes, it is.
We do. So if you want to jump on the mentee and take that question, it's just a yes or no question, gives us a data point to be able to evaluate whether to proceed with this or not. There's a lot of best practices that we've learned. So as we mentioned, a lot of this was done in the early 80s, 90s, was very, very popular. Library of Congress actually did a lot of research around time capsules. And we learned that a lot of the things that were done back then, people cracked open these time capsules and realized water had gotten in, all the stuff had been ruined. It was very anticlimactic, right? So there are some things that we can do in terms of preparing a time capsule properly, in terms of materials that are used, right? You're not just slipping in Sunday's newspaper, right? We're able to photocopy those things, put them on the right kinds of acid-free types of paper. Outstanding. Great, great data point there. So thank you for pulling that up. And so we can do some things. There's a small cost associated with that, but really what we need from the community, if this is something we want to pursue, is we need your ideas about what to put in it. And we can get the materials, we can get the proper vessel. Also, we don't typically bury them anymore, right? So I really like the idea of making this a centerpiece in our town hall, in City Hall, to say, these are our time capsules, and be able to preserve and protect those over the years. And then it'd be a talking piece. If you go into City Hall, I love that we have, you know, a couple of different walls of just the city of Leon Valley and our history. So a couple of things, I'm hitting the wrong button here. There we go. Oh, this is an eye chart, so I'm not going to read it to you. You guys can read it in the packet. But just some, some contents around what we put in and don't put in, obviously not food. Nobody bring like a COVID test or something that was used. Don't do that, right? We don't, we don't want to wake this up like 50 years from now. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do in terms of best practices that Library of Congress has really put together. And so really, the open-ended question that we want to spend the next about three minutes on, is that roughly what I got left? Okay. Is, what do you guys think should go in the time capsule? Like about where we are in our history right now, and somebody 50 years from now, when they open this up, they're like, oh, that was that era. That was that time in our history. So that's, that's what I wanted to pose to you. Other than that, that's all I got. So, thank you, guys. Okay, go with the mini mayor. Okay, so five to one, roughly? Five to one, want to do a time capsule? Cost is really minimal, you know? Less than a, what? Probably less than we spent on the survey. Probably less than it cost to mail out one Lion's Roar, total cost. Okay, here, good, good questions here. News from today, picture, oh, sorry, that was good. Headlines throughout history. Bandera Road plans, I love that. Maybe, maybe 50 years from now, hopefully, it'll be done, right? An unused COVID test. Lion's Roar, I like that. Current council members awards given to library, fire department, all of our department heads, federal government heads. Interesting. I like the idea of, has anybody ever seen comparisons of like 1940 for a gallon of, gallon of milk, loaf of bread, right? Like price comparison, gallon of gas, that kind of stuff? That's kind of fun. Well, thank you, guys, for, for humoring this history nerd's desire to do this stuff. And I'll hand it back over to the mayor.
Thank you so much. Let's give Mr. Councilor Hefner a round of applause for that idea. Do appreciate it. That's what I love about this town hall meeting. We're incorporating all of the council into this process as well as the staff. The next one, and we're pretty much on time, are we not? 10:40. I think we're, we're ahead. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe that. Whoa. All right. So Councilor Bradshaw, if you'll come on back up. He is really big into events. He's got a lot of great ideas, and I'm talking to him about the historical society, and he's got a lot of ideas about the historical society as well, because it's a, is it a spooky place? Yes, a haunted trail or whatever. You've got to share that with the historical society. But anyway, let me pass it over to Mayor Protim Will Bradshaw, and he's going to present the city events portion of this town hall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, we just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the events that the city of Leon Valley puts on every year and kind of get feedback of what do people like, what don't they like? Obviously, some are well-attended and some aren't so well-attended. So let's just talk, these are the five major things that, that the city does currently, and of course, you know, we're open for suggestions of, of other things. One of these is my favorite. I won't tell you which one. But yeah, so we do movies in the park. We do the Fourth of July Parade and the Festival over at Ray Maricas Park, a Soapbox Derby. We've done it for two years. Is that right? I think we've done it twice. Christmas tree lighting that is just outside here every year, and then Grandparents' Day. And so the idea of this agenda item was to get people's feedback of, you know, how many people attend? Do you like these events? Do you want to continue these events? Or do we not want to do these events? So we'll go through a little bit of each one. The Movies in the Park, it's usually four movies per year, but we do it during the better temperature months. The, held the last Friday of the month, and the months may vary, 2020 cost was $2,000. So we spent $500 per movie to show these movies to get the license for it. At 2020, we didn't do it because of COVID, and 2022, we estimate it'll be the same, about $2,000. And, you know, if you haven't been, those children, I've been there a few times, you know, you bring your chairs, set up, and they'll have popcorn and snow cones and things like that, and just, just watch the movie in the park. It's usually family-friendly kids movies, cartoons, that type of stuff. So that was the first Movies in the Park. Second one, Fourth of July event. This is our big event every year, obviously with fireworks. This year, we have planned for the band, The Spasmatics, to come, which is a very popular 80s cover band, and they're a lot of fun. I mentioned to my family back in Arizona that they're coming this year, and so I have some family members that are planning to come out here with my, with their kids, my nieces and nephews, to come into that event. So, oops, I didn't mean to, did I do that? Did somebody else do it? Sorry. Okay. So yeah, Fourth of July event. Obviously, 2020 was canceled, but that's our, our big event of the year. The cost estimate, you know, $40,000, park setup, staging, signage, I always go through the, the total, about $105,000 for the Fourth of July. Soapbox Derby, again, we did it in 2019, and we did it, we did it twice, I know, but it was canceled in 2020. About $28,000 is budgeted for this, and that's where they shut down Everest Road, usually in October, and they have the, the businesses come and the kids race the Soapbox Derby cars down Everest Road. And then the winners can go to regional events as well, different divisions. There's licensing fees and stuff. And then, of course, we do the Christmas tree lighting here in November, which, you know, Public Works puts on, does a great job setting up this whole community center with all the lights, and we have hot chocolate, candy canes, cookies, and refreshments. Last year, we had churros from, I love churros, come. And it's not too expensive, as you can see, $2,000 budgeted for that. And then Grandparents' Day. Not too expensive. We have a band come and play, and, but usually there's a low turnout here. So basically, the questions that are coming up on your, if you want to go to your mentee meter and go to the next, these are the questions. Oh, I guess it's not up. Oh, were you switching? No, to it over there. Okay. So the first one, should the city continue with the Fourth of July event? It's like 20, say yes, and one says no. You can go vote, and then once you submit it, it goes to the, the next questions. So it's a little bit closer, six nos, 14 yeses. Oh, this is Soapbox Derby, I'm sorry. I didn't know we moved on already. Yeah, I just, I just didn't know how many people, if everybody hasn't voted yet. So 20, 28, yes. And again, as Dr. Caldera mentioned, this, these will be open until Monday. If people online watch this afterwards, they can go in and vote. The 29 to one right now. Okay. You can go to the, the next one, the Soapbox Derby. So little, not as, not as popular, I guess, as the Fourth of July, 21 to 10, Soapbox Derby. Okay. And then the next one would be Movies in the Park. And again, it looks like 26 to five, so it's pretty popular. I had to put in my answers. Okay. Christmas tree lighting, wow, that's really a popular event, I think, well-attended, 30 to one. And I think, you know, even the event itself, to me, even if after it's over, you know, I always see people coming over here with their families and walking around just because this is such a nice, especially depending on the weather, but it's nice to see all the lights and stuff going on. I know Public Works does a great job with that.
Who's the one Grinch?
Somebody doesn't like Christmas. That's okay. That's okay. Okay. And then Grandparents' Day. Okay, it's about split, 17 to 15 for Grandparents' Day. You know, and I guess that's another thing we could, you guys can feel free to email me, or actually, we have time, right, Mayor? So is there anybody else while we're on this subject? Is there any other ideas for events or things the city, that people would like the city to do or not, or questions? I see Mr. Bowle has a question.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilman Bradshaw, for this presentation. One of the ideas that has been recently floated around the community to some is that improving and expanding on the Christmas lighting, tree lighting or Christmas lighting to actually make it a Christmas village event. That should last anywhere from one, one to two weeks, considering circumstances and all of that. But I believe, as many here have watched Hallmark movies, you know, and are those little towns, Christmas village at this time of year usually brings the community greatly together. It brings some, you know, commerce to our city, brings vendors to our city. And in the near future, hopefully, this will be a full-blown Veterans Memorial Park, as the Parks Commission hopes. And it will bring some attention to that. And in doing so, we could bring in the, the American Legion on that and other nonprofits into that project. So expanding on the Christmas lighting, the Christmas village is an idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowle. I agree. I had that idea a couple of years ago when I went back to Arizona to visit family for Christmas time, and they had set up in the middle of downtown, they had an ice skating rink for the kids, and they had, you know, a little hot chocolate stand and stuff. And it was really cool. They were playing Christmas music and stuff. And I looked a little bit into bringing that here, and it's pretty expensive, but, you know, who knows? Maybe in the future, we can get sponsors and expand upon that idea, vendors, et cetera, to help pay for those type of things. But yeah, I think definitely if there's something to do here besides just, I mean, the lights are nice, right? People do come and look at the lights, but if there's something else for people to do when they came, it'd be a good idea. Any other ideas or comments? Ms. Valdez?
Hello?
Takes a second.
Does it? Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Have anyone considered some live music concerts in the park?
Live music and concerts in the park?
Yeah. Yes. Lotus has a jazz.
A jazz festival or something like that? There was talk in the past about putting up some kind of outside, what's it called? I don't want to say a stadium. It's not a stadium. The amphitheater. Yeah, like an outside amphitheater. There was talk about that before. So yeah, that's something also that can be considered. Everything falls on the Park Commission. If you guys need, you need help, you need to, you need to join the Park Commission.
Another idea was... Another idea was to participate in the world's largest swim lesson. This is a worldwide event. There are facilities all over the world that, at the same time, they teach a 30-minute swimming lesson. And then, all the people that participate, the numbers are totaled. And it's quite amazing how many countries and cities and states participated in this. And luckily, and the time would be 10:00 AM our time. So, like, the other side of the world, they're doing that swimming lesson at the same time in the middle of the night. So, just something to think about, because we do have two swimming pools.
So, Kathy Hill made, online, so we're taking questions and stuff online. Kathy Hill mentioned that maybe we could do more with Grandparents' Day. She thinks a lot of people maybe don't know about it. So, just her statement.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's true. And along those lines about the swimming pools, the council just voted last council meeting to get more use out of our swimming pools, to offer free days. The holidays will be free, open to the public. And one day a week, I don't think we know which day, the slow day, which is Wednesday or Thursday, we're trying to look at the data. But that, during the full season, that'll be open to the public for free to kind of promote people to use it. And first Fridays of the month, I guess. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Yarnell, then we have a question here.
Yes.
Well, you're good, you should be gone. Oh, no, just kidding.
Testing.
There you go. Your magic, the magic touch.
Several years ago, we had a very successful jazz festival here, a two-day festival. And we might look into doing that again. We had international and national representation from the jazz field. And it was well-attended.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. I also heard from longtime residents that there's, there used to be, was it called Pioneer Days? Something like that. And, you know, there was stagecoach days, sorry, stagecoach days. But there was some, I see Ms. Chason, but we had somebody up here first.
We actually have a pair of questions. So, one of them is, for these events, like, a lot of them sound great, but I think the visibility is not always there. Like, the Christmas lighting, I mean, that sounds really nice, but I would probably not even know when it happens. Like, is there a way to either improve visibility or advertisement in general?
Yeah, so, we do put in the Lion's Roar, the, and the E-News, that comes out if you haven't signed up for E-News. But you're right, we haven't done the best job of promoting things. And, you know, if you're like me, I get my Lion's Roar and I see it, and then I put it away, and then time goes by. And then you're like, oh, that was today, oops. Or that was yesterday, right? And then you miss it. So, we do have a new Communications Director that is. Right, Crystal Miranda. And she's doing a great job on social media. If you, if you're on, you know, YouTube, Twitter, Facebook, you can see those events. There are flyers, Fourth of July, there's a flyer that goes out. The postcard, it's mailed. For the Christmas Tree Lighting, I don't think we've done flyers in the past. Yeah, it gets expensive, but. Thank you, Crystal. Noted, we're, we're trying to do better on communication, for sure, for sure.
If there's any other types of advertising that y'all may suggest to me, I'm very open to using them. So, if you want to suggest any forms of advertising, I'd greatly help. I greatly appreciate the help.
The, the new restaurant here, if they would collaborate with the city and use like a Friday of every week, or we have designated days where the restaurants willing to advertise for what's going on in the city with their Leon Valley lights, their signage.
I use the Flyover marquee. And then, we also have the Library marquee. But that's a good idea. And then, maybe I can actually give some newsletters or e-newsletters to the businesses, and they can post at their businesses that people frequently dine at. That's a good idea.
Ms. Chason, do we?
Yes, hello. So, so, okay. I was just wondering, going back to the Jazz Festival that Mr. Yarnell spoke of, you might want to consider coinciding that with the Jazz Festival that takes place at Crossroads Wonderland, to coordinate the people that perform there also to come here. And that would reduce the cost overall.
That's a good idea. So, yeah, good, good, good comments, good thoughts. And then, the mayor mentioned earlier about the Halloween thing. Because, because the, you know, last few years with COVID, we've had a drive-through trick-or-treating thing right here, right out here, where families could drive through and get candy. And HEB Buddy was there and different things. And so, we were kind of brainstorming, talking about like fundraisers for the Historical Society, what we could do. And I had the idea of doing like a haunted trail over there in the natural area, where we could get sponsors and have a lighted path for people to go walk around and get trick-or-treats and stuff. So, that's an idea. Somebody else? Ms. Burnside? Oh, Ms. Mulder, sorry.
I just think we need to give a great hand of thanks to the Public Works Department. What they presented for this past holiday season, the Christmas, was unbelievable. And I think that was noticed by so many people outside of the city. It should bring good vibes for thoughts about Leon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Yes, I agree. How do we get on one of those shows where they give prizes? Like $100,000 for the winners? Can't we enter that? Mr. Hefner? And then, some, let's hear from some people who haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, I'll, hello. There we go. I'll echo that. I, I love, I mean, my kids absolutely love the Christmas lights that get put up. For anybody who hasn't noticed it, one of my absolute favorite things that Public Works does is one of the trees out here, this old, this old muskie kind of tree leaning over, they turn it into, if you've ever seen A Charlie Brown Christmas, they turn it into the Christmas tree from A Charlie Brown Christmas. And it's just the most adorable thing ever. My kids love it. So, that's one of our Christmas favorites. So, if you haven't seen that, I hope that never goes away, because that's one of the best things Melinda and her crew does around that time of year. So, I absolutely love it. And thank you, guys, for coming out.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that I think there can be better use of the Library marquee. One, I think we can take down or reduce the timing of some of the COVID messages. Where, I think we got that. But some of the print size on that marquee is so small. I mean, I walk the park every day. And even when I'm walking on Evers in my circle, I can't even read the writing because it's so small. So, I think that needs to be utilized more effectively. Because if you're driving down Evers, you need to be able to see it in a flash and not sit there and slow down so you can read the writing. And I also want to echo the, the commendments for the Public Works Department, not only on the Christmas display, but on their everyday work in the park. They are, those guys work so hard. And they have really stepped up their maintenance in the park, and it's impressive.
Thank you, yes, I agree.
So, we got an online person that said, instead of Grandparents' Day, let's recognize some of our outstanding volunteers or helpful citizens of Leon Valley. We do do a volunteer appreciation dinner. We have canceled it the last two years. So, we are looking at alternative dates for next year.
Yes, hello. Okay.
Yes, and back in coordination with the Haunted Trail, what about if someone got together with the Historical Society and possibly the seniors at Marshall High School, and do a haunted house kind of venue utilizing the Onion House and the surrounding grounds? And you could charge an admission and get the kids from Marshall and the Theater Department to help coordinate it and do the designs and the costumes? And possibly volunteers out of the citizens in Leon Valley? The money that would be generated from an admission would go towards the Historical Society and bettering the Onion House.
I think that's a really good idea. And that's kind of where the Haunted Trail idea came from, because, you know, fundraisers to try and restore some of the things at the Historical Society. So, that's a great idea. Anybody else? Should we move on to the next agenda item? I think we're still good on time. All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you, those are all great ideas. I do want to say that the Movies in the Park, in the past, we've gotten sponsorships from State Representative Ray Lopez and State Senator Menendez. So, they've contributed to the Movies in Park so that they could also publicize it through their offices. So, maybe we could do that again. So, but anyway, all great ideas. And appreciate all the input, for sure. Okay. And, you know, we, we also have to give a shout out to our Police Department and our Fire Department, too. I mean, I love our Public Works, but thank you for those police and fire that keep us safe. And they're out there day in and day out. So, we thank them as well. So, alrighty. Okay, now, this is, you know, I got the, the task of presenting proposed amendments on the Home Rule Charter. And I wanted to start out by saying that last year, the council learned that the Home Rule Charter cannot be repealed because there is no mechanism in the Texas Local Government Code, only adoption and amending. And I remember contacting State Representative Ray Lopez last March. But the, the session was already ongoing, and it was too late to introduce any kind of new bills. But, but anyway, if we wanted to repeal the Home Rule Charter, you have to go back through the legislature for that. So, at the Council Board Retreat last September, we ran out of time when we came to the Home Rule Charter discussion. And so, I volunteered to work on redlining the charter. And then, I forwarded it to the council and the city manager at the end of October for their review and changes. And for full disclosure, I consulted with the law firm that I work with on the state and federal laws governing our charter. I did not receive any changes from any of my colleagues. So, this is a draft. This is not set in stone. This is a dialogue that we're going to start. And why do we need to change the charter? As I go through it, again, this is my perspective and the council's perspective. And we're presenting it to you. What I'm presenting this morning is a draft, like I said, a start of a dialogue on how to change our current charter. And as you can see in front of you, there's three proposed changes. These are the three reasons. Number one, and I'll just put this in my own words, to rebalance our city government and bring back to a council-manager form of government, rather than the current manager-council structure, where the current charter gave the manager or gives the manager powers over policy, like hiring the city attorney. Number two, recommending removing all the forfeiture and the penalty provisions, which led to the council-majority members or staff trying to remove political opponents from council for political reasons. To simplify and shorten the charter by eliminating sections of the charter that are already in state or federal laws or that are repetitive. We went 65 years as a general law city without a charter, and we didn't have any of these problems. And the city manager's powers are limited to what the council gives them. The citizens are in charge of electing and removing council members and the mayor, not the elected body or staff. Recall is an effective remedy for removing council members, and that power belongs to you, the people. So, what do we need the charter for? We need it because we want to expand our ordinance powers to the maximum allowed by state law. And it also gives citizens the power of initiative. That means you are able to come to council with a new ordinance that you would like to be, to be put forth. Referendum, where you come to council and you want to vote out an existing ordinance. And recall, removing elected officials. Additionally, the power to amend the charter by petition and election. And of course, you know, initiative, referendum and recall just don't happen overnight. It's a grassroots effort. You have to go and you have to collect signatures from your fellow citizens. And then, if you meet that criteria of the number of signatures, then you're able to put it on the ballot. This is the democratic grassroots process where it works. This is why the citizens voted 2 to 1 to recall two council members last November, after our city was dragged through a very long and painful 312 investigation and hearing to remove a council member. Ethics hearing to remove myself. And then, another attempt to remove the mayor through the 312 hearing process. Plus, another attempt to remove another council member, which the federal court judge stopped. This was last 2020 and 2021. All of this, I remind you, cost the city, over three fiscal years, $750,000 in attorney fees. That's insane. Now, did all of that go to the recall and the 312? No, that was for all of the legal fees. So, it's hard to kind of devy it out. But you get the, you get the point. There was a lot of time and energy wasted in trying to remove people from office, rather than doing the business of the city, the issues that are facing us. You just saw a bunch of them this morning. So, in a minute, I will show you the 312 section of the charter, which is at the heart of this current charter, which is primarily used to remove council members. So, I'll just read that last paragraph here. If the changes are approved by the council and votus, and the earliest election that we can have is November of 2022. Leon Valley will have a charter which broadly defines its council-manager form of government, gives maximum home rule power to the council to pass any ordinance not prohibited by state law, and provides citizens with the important rights of initiative, referendum, recall and charter amendment. Okay, if you'll move to the next slide. Article 1, Establishment. This is what it's all about, y'all. This is it. This is at the heart of our Home Rule Charter. 1.01 and 1.02 is a great provision. It's the council-manager form of government. And elected officials make the decision, and the city manager shall answer to the city council. And the city shall have the power of local self-government. So, this is it. This is what we're all about. This is the essence. But, as you go on, and, and, Crystal, did we have the redline document at your table? And then, yeah, so most, I just wanted you, if y'all wanted to follow along, there's the redline, and then, and then there's the. Okay, I just, yeah, if you, if you care, okay. And I'm not going through the, I'm not going through the whole charter. I'm just going through the redlined version, okay? Article 3.01, this duplicates Section 1.01 and 1.02. But if you'll notice in B, it gives the manager more power. The city council or legislatures and shall not encroach on the executive responsibilities of the city manager. And number C is just repetitive. And we move then to the next article, 3.03, which is qualifications. And I'm recommending deleting C and D. C, again, for, the idea is just to get rid of all this angst and gotcha, and we want to remove you, you know, just get rid of that from the charter. And so, C is, you know, you're in violation of the charter. And E is, you haven't been forfeited. So, get rid of C and E. Because a person who is not qualified will be removed by a court of law. Again, we went 65 years as a general law city and never had an issue with this. Leave the electing and removing of city council members to the people. Leave the electing and removing of city council members to the people. The next one, 3.04, which is, the council is the sole judge of, you know, who meets the qualification. I'm recommending removing this. Recommending removal of forfeiture from the charter. A court of law is the final judge to remove a council person. And we saw this in October of 2020, when the federal court judge ruled that the current council could not remove an elected official. So recommending removal. Okay, the next one is 3.06, the council and the mayor. On section A, as you can see, keep the first part of the sentence with a period at government, but remove for ceremony purposes, emergency management, et cetera, et cetera. It limits the power of the mayor, and, and most of this is in, in state law, but never in 65 years has the mayor been a governor for purposes of military law. I've never seen that. Emergency management powers are already in state law. And then the, on B, and this was added last November of 2020, this sentence was added. The mayor may debate and discuss any matters before city council. I deleted policy because I think it's, you know, needs to be broader, but, and then remove shall remain neutral and unbiased in dealing with citizens and city council members. Delete that, but then keep shall only vote in event of a tie. Now, how can you discuss policy issues without taking a position? That's, that's, that's mind-boggling to me. This would reestablish the power of the mayor. The mayor has always been the leader of policy issues, and in general law, had not had these limits before. So the, the, the goal is to keep the Home Rule Charter, but make it reflect more of the general law that we had for 65 years, that gave more flexibility to how we, how we govern ourselves. The next one is Article three, the city council and mayor. Deleting number two, and again, it's kind of hard to read, but this section is governed by state law and actually goes beyond state law, according to, to, to my, to my understanding. And number three, you would change the mayor and not the city council would approve absences of council members. And again, this is like we did it in, in general law. And number four, completely remove section four here, because this, again, gets us into the mischief that we had in 2019 and 2020, and we don't need it. Go through the recall process. The only reason to forfeiture someone from office is if they do not meet the basic requirements. They're not a resident, they don't attend meetings, and they're younger than 18, or they move out of the, yeah, they move out of the city, then they're not, they're not eligible. So that's, that's, would be number four. The next one is Article three, section 309, and, let me see, this is a big one. And again, recommending removal of it completely. Number A, admitting liability has to be a council vote, not by one council member. And again, I'm not reading it word for word, you have it at your table. Number B, removing that because that is covered by state law. I'm going to put my glasses on. This is where a member of the council shall not be employed or appointed to a position of city manager until three years after, again, that's in, in state law. C, where the city council shall not give orders to any, to the manager or the officers and employees. This is what got us in trouble a couple of years ago. I think it's too broad, giving orders is too broad, is too, it's subject to interpretation and can be abused. And I believe that the council and the manager establish the boundaries at the beginning of their relationship, and that's what we've done with Dr. Caldera. Number D, dictating to the city manager, again, allows the manager to claim, you know, again, it's broad. How do you define that? And it, again, caused the controversy in 2019 regarding the 312 hearing, and this is subject to interpretation and can be abused. And again, the council and manager established the lines of communication from the beginning. And then E, eliminate attorney-client privileged communications section. This was, this was a big issue in the 312 and then the ethics hearing that I was dragged through. So I have, I've, I've, I've lived through this, and the issue in the past had to do with attorney fees. Attorney fees are not privileged by law. The amount of money spent on attorney fees, the public has the right to know because you're paying for it. The city manager and I have discussed that any attorney-client document will be clearly marked, so there's no misunderstanding of what can and cannot be released. This was used as a technical gotcha to try and get rid of the mayor in 2019, 2020. And just remember, the privilege belongs to the council, not the attorney. So again, just eliminating that section completely. Next one is Article 310, agendas procedures. Again, A is fine, that's how you put things on the agenda, but B, under procedure, recommend removal because it's really unnecessary, and we have not followed it, and the council can always set up procedures when we need them. So we eliminate it, or that's the recommendation. The next one, Article three, section 312. Again, repeal this section in its entirety, and I'm repeating myself, but I can't say it enough. This was the section that caused turmoil in city government and was abused, the removal provision. Let the people decide through elections and recall who they want serving on council, not a majority council member seeking to remove a minority council member. Council needs to focus on policy issues and not on removing political opponents. Then the next section that I, that was suggested to, to be modified, and that's elections. Instead of specified, just allowed. Again, gives us more leeway and is more flexible, just that one change in that, that section. The next section is to modify 5.01, city manager, and to omit the last sentence, sentence of A. It gives more leeway for the council. They can appoint whoever they want, and, I mean, the council's very, very smart, and they know, they want somebody with experience, but if you, if you limit them to executive and administrative training, experience, and ability, you know, that's limiting. And the example I give is, our longest-serving city manager was Hank Brummett, 11 years. He had no municipal experience at all. He was in the military, and he was hired to come to the city. And so that's why you want to be a little bit more flexible. And then on B, you know, I've kind of wrestled with this. Two-thirds vote is four out of five, and majority vote is three out of five. And so this is in regard to appointing and compensation, and I'm recommending that we change it from two-thirds to just a majority, three out of five. But again, this is not set in stone, this is just for discussion, and, and we'll go through the process and decide, you know, what, what that, what the right number is there. Okay, moving then to 5.02, the creation of departments. Recommending deletion of the last part of that section since it limits the council to be able to make decision, to make changes, excuse me. Direction by city manager, okay, the city manager directs everybody. And then B, on the city attorney, this was a major change in our charter. Under home rule, excuse me, under general law, the city council appointed the city attorney, and the city attorney reported to the city council. And it was changed in this recent Home Rule Charter, so I'd like to return it back to where the council appoints the city attorney, and the city attorney reports to the council. No change in C. And then in D, again, I've had experience in working in the general law, and we appointed the city secretary, we appointed the city attorney, and we appointed the police and fire chief. A lot of times, the police and fire chief had a committee, you know, that interviewed and then made a recommendation, but again, it gave the city council that ability to, to appoint them. So that's, I'd like to broaden the council's powers there. The next one is Article seven, and 7.01, 7.02, and 7.03, conflicts of interest, general prohibitions, and regulation of alcohol. They're all unnecessary because they're all covered by state law. And again, we're trying, another idea is just to kind of streamline this document. I think our constitution, is it our state constitution, or it's like 10 pages long? I mean, you know, we, we can make, we can make it brief, and that's another goal here. The next one, 7.05, charter review committee. On A, instead of shall, shall means you must appoint a charter review committee at any time. Change that to may. We may not want to do it every time. So again, giving the council a little bit more leeway. And then, I wanted you to note on F, this is the section the city council is following and amending the charter this go-around. We did not form a committee, but instead, we're following F, which says nothing in this charter, excuse me, nothing in this section prohibits the city council from forming a charter review committee at any time, or from submitting any amendments to the charter to election on its own initiative at any time in compliance with state law. So in other words, the council with citizen input will submit charter amendments for the ballot, hopefully in November, if we can get it together. Whatever is decided regarding the amendments in the current charter, we would need to have these amendments pretty well finalized by, I believe, August 16th, Dr. Caldera, which is when you have to call the election for November. So that's, that's our timeline that we have from today to August 16th. The next section is 7.06. Again, this is unnecessary because it's covered by state law. And section 10, 7.10, that's the same general provision, again, trying to eliminate it because it's already covered by state law. And section 713, the penalty clause, if we removed the 312 hearing and all the forfeiture and all of, all of that language from the Home Rule Charter, then you don't need a penalty clause. That's where, if you violate something, then you have to pay $500. So, we got along fine for 65 years without spending our time attacking one another and giving our city a black eye. The revised charter will continue to give more power to pass ordinances beyond the general laws of the state, continues to give our citizens the power over city council by initiative, referendum, and recall. It is my hope that an amended charter will bring us back to the way city hall should function. Let's focus on issues facing our cities. How can we work together to solve them? And if you don't like who represents you, well, then win at the ballot box. If you want change, or start, start a recall provision, or petition, excuse me. So where do we go from here? We need citizen input of this first draft document presented this morning, and if the council decides to put these proposals on the ballot for the November election, you will be able to vote on each one of them. And I, Councilor Hefner, are you, yeah, you had an idea, because you and I talked a couple, about a month ago, about how we should present this. You know, how do we go, do we, do we have separate meetings? And, and you had an idea, and I just wanted you to share that because, again, it's open, it's an open for discussion. So thank y'all very much for your, for listening. Again, not set in stone, just, just proposal, and let's see where we go from here. Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good. Hello? No? Nobody can hear me?
Go ahead.
There we go.
Test, test.
So, did you want me to talk about that bit now? I'll give you two minutes on it. Yeah, so I love this kind of minutia, it's kind of silly, but like, I think about the history of our country. I think about the framers who wrote our constitution, and our Home Rule Charter is our city's constitution. It's designed to protect the minority. It's designed to protect the speech of those who aren't popular at any given point in time. And, you know, I know the, the mayor mentioned, we have a council right now who she said is very smart. I know she was talking about somebody else besides me. But, you know, we also have to think about when we craft a document like this, we, we don't think about ourselves or the current moment that we're in, we have to think about the legacy that we leave for our city. And we have to contemplate future councils. We have to use history as our guide to tell us what could happen. And, you know, we have to contemplate those scenarios, where what if you have a council with four members who want to suppress a fifth member? Right? And, and in that situation, how does the minority voice get heard? I think it was very, very timely, Mayor. There was a Supreme Court ruling, actually this week, I believe it was Wilson versus Houston Community College or something like that. And essentially, the, the outcome of that Supreme Court ruling was the answer for unwanted speech. So unpopular or unfavorable speech is more speech. It's, it's the, the, the city forum, the, it's the open marketplace of ideas, and ideas being heard and debated and discussed. And that is, you know, I think the mayor's done a, a good job of, of taking a first pass at this amendment process. You know, we've looked through different elements of this. I, I think that there's definitely room for the input of this audience, the input of our citizens, you know, and so with that, feel free to email me or any one of your, your representatives. But I, I absolutely agree that we have an opportunity every single year, as citizens, to reshape our representation. Every member of this city council is elected at large, and two of them are elected one year, and then the other three are elected the next year. And so this year, in two months, no, in a little over a month, we have an opportunity to reshape our council, if you so desire. The mayor's up for reelection, two of our councilmen are up for reelection, and so every single year, we have that opportunity. I, I agree that our city's been through a lot in terms of the results of elections, but then the actions taken between those elections and taken out of the hands of citizens. You know, I'm also one to call a spade a spade and not dance around an issue, right? We had a council member that was removed from office, and in the very next election, he was reelected to office. I think that's a testament that our citizens decide who should represent them and who shouldn't. And, and I think that what these changes are beginning to do is put that power in the citizens' hands, allow them to vote with their voice at the ballot box, with your voice. So with that, I won't belabor the point any longer. Also, you know, the mayor was subject to some ethics investigations, and she's, how many times have you been reelected mayor?
Oh, I can't, I've lost track.
Yeah. I, I think she's been our mayor for 16 years, something like that?
Let's see, I was elected in June of 2004.
Yep. And so every two years, so almost, almost 20 years.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years now, so if, at any point, our city, our citizens are not happy with Mayor Riley, they can vote her out of office, and they'll have that opportunity in a month, if they so choose. And so I, I agree that we should not be spending our time focusing on the political. That opportunity is every election season, we can focus on the political. But when we're elected, I think it's important that we serve the business of the city, and we spend that time efficiently and wisely. we spend that time efficiently and wisely. You know, there's, there's no reason why we should spend our time fighting and bickering. And I think this council has done a tremendous job of respecting one another even when we disagree. And we've had those times where we've disagreed passionately about particular issues. But as I start, as I mentioned with the Supreme Court case, unwanted speech, speech I disagree with, speech you disagree with, the best remedy for that is more speech. Let's talk about it. Let's, let's persuade one another, let's convince one another, let's not just try to silence others. That's...
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Councilor Hefner, did you remember you had, you and I were talking about, well, you know, how do, how do we get this out to the public to get more input? And I thought you had recommended maybe meeting 45 minutes before a council meeting to start taking this up, or, you know, that was, that was...
I'm sorry.
...the ideas you had. No, but that's good. I appreciate your comments this morning.
Yeah, sometimes we don't like to wax philosophical, so, okay. Yeah, so there's, you know, plenty of open forum. We can take whatever citizens give us feedback on, when it works for you. I know that a lot of times, I'm working right before a council meeting, and so I'm like coming right from work into the council meeting. But if there's particular times at work, if we want to use the coffee with the mayor, I've also proposed changing that to coffee with the council and mimosas with the mayor. Chew on that a little bit. But that might be a good forum to discuss some of these edits. But over the next couple of months, you know, I think is a really, a time as we move into the spring and in the summer, to flesh out any changes to these that we want to do and then move forward with the business of our city and get this on the ballot for November.
Excellent, thank you. All right.
So I have a couple of comments from citizens online.
Okay, you bet.
So Kathy Hill says, "We don't need to go backwards and repeal the charter, we just need to make it work for us. Change the charter so it can be used, so it can't be used as a political weapon and gives our city the power to make decisions the state law does not address. General law did not give us greater authority. The charter gives us greater authority. Just fix the charter, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater." And then we had another person, and I'm not sure who it is because of their username, but it is E R T A T T A. I'm assuming that's Eric Mata. But it says, "Bravo on this presentation, Mayor. The idea is to bring back the citizens having a say. That's what the mayor is proposing in these changes." And that's it.
Thank you. All righty, very good. Anything else? And we'll move on to the hike and bike trail unless there's another... Oh, Mr. ... Oh, you're the hike and bike trail. Okay. Anything else? Thank you all very much, I really appreciate your patience this morning. All right, great. We're going to now go to the next item, proposed hike and bike trails, one and two, and we have Councilor Benny Martinez and Melinda Borts, our Public Relations Director, this morning to present. Thank you.
One thing I can say, Mayor Meffert, our previous mayor, had a citizens' community development training course, and that's what got me started on this. And I would, one of the things I'd like to talk with the mayor in the future is to reconstruct that and to get more people involved, or let them know more about the city government and how it operates. So another thing that got me involved is this topic of the hike and bike trail. You know, we have a very precious commodity in our city, the natural area. And originally, it was proposed, proposed to put a hike and bike trail right through the middle of our natural area. And it's just not a 10-foot cement trail. There's three feet on each side. So imagine a 16-foot trail right through the middle of our natural area. That would ruin it. And I mentioned, I came, I was very public, I was very emotional about this, and I attended several of the meetings, and I was very passionate about it. And I guess where I was, my downfall, should I say, is I approached the mayor and I mentioned to her that I'd be willing to help her in her reelection. And she called me to attend the meeting, and then, oh, we need somebody to run against a sitting city council member. And she twisted my arm, she almost broke it, you know, my arm was turned back so far. But, you know, I've been on council for eight years now, but this is one thing I've been very passionate about, and the new amendments to it are perfect. I really enjoy it, and we have Melinda here to discuss it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Nobody showed me how to work this.
Wow.
Okay, so this is to update the council and citizens on our Heebner Creek Greenway hike and bike trail system. Segment one is a trail that's going to go from Shadow Mist Road, which is adjacent to the new soccer field, all the way to the Heebner Indian Natural Area House in Triangle Park. This one's already been approved for funding, and TechStop review is just about complete. We had a little holdup with the environmental. They wanted to know what artifacts were along the side of the creek, and I said, well, if there were any, they went off in an 18-wheeler about two years ago. There's a big hole there. Segment two is a trail that's planned from 6613 Bandera Road, again, the Heebner Indian Natural Area Park, to Evers Road through Raymond Rimkus Park. We got the award notification in August of last year, and it's going to be funded in TechStop's 2023-24 fiscal year. So Trail Segment One is going to connect to the Leon Creek Greenway Trail System in San Antonio, and that's at Shadow Mist Road, and then it'll continue to Bandera Road going under the bridge, and it'll be parallel to El Verdi. The engineering and design has been completed, and the property's been deeded to the city. The project bidding is pending approval of the environmental, like I said. We're hoping to get that in April. May, we'll advertise bids for construction. June will be the bidding date. We'll have to get TechStop's approval with who we choose, and then the city council can approve the contract, and the construction should start. Should take about 120 days for completion. We're hoping in December, it's weather dependent, it's also dependent upon the supply chain right now. And this shows you the trail segment. There's Grissom Road, this is El Verdi, and here's where our trail would start, down here at Crystal Hills Park. This is Shadow Mist, and it'll wind its way around and then down underneath the bridge and stop there. Trail Segment Two, this one's going to connect to Segment One at the Bandera Road Bridge and continue to Evers Road through the Heebner Indian Natural Area Fire Break. So this will go along the outside of the, the natural area, and then it'll go through Raymond Rimkus Park. We said the funding was awarded in August of this last year, and it won't start taking place till the year 2023. And this is this one. So here's Bandera Road right here. It'll go along this, there's a CPS easement there that's already been cleared, and then back here, we have a fire break, so that's already cleared as well. It'll connect up to the trail in the quiet area and then go on through and up to Evers The Segment Two is reimbursement funding program, same as the first one. It's an 80/20 match with the Federal Highway Administration and TechStop paying about 80% of the construction cost, the city paying 20%. The total's about 1.14 million. We won't know until we get the contract, the construction bids are open. The city is responsible for all the costs of the engineering, and it's usually 10% to 15% of the construction cost. So we're looking at about $230,000, our portion for construction, $130,000 for engineering, design, and construction management, and then we'll have some TechStop review fees. We might have some additional service costs for environmental review as well. So for Segment Two, we'll start the engineering this coming fall. That review takes about nine months normally with TechStop, and then in August of 2023, we'll advertise the bids, September, get our concurrence, and hopefully start the construction in October of 2023. So hopefully, by the time February of 2024 comes along, you'll have trail that goes from Shadow Mist all the way to Evers Road. And that's all I have for y'all. Do you may have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
What I think is really cool is that this, these two segments will connect to the Howard Peak Greenway. So we will be able to get on the trail in Leon Valley safely and go all the way to UTSA to the rim. And right now, my neighbor, she just bicycled a couple of weeks ago, she said she has to drive to Grissom and park and then get her bike and then go all the way up to UTSA. But this is going to be a seamless connection to the Howard Peak. And again, the Howard Peak is going to go around eventually the entire county in one big loop. And again, it's in phases, it's not, it's not there yet. So I think that's exciting. And I've also heard that there is, if we, okay, we got the, the funding, and now the city of San Antonio is looking at connecting the medical center to our trail at Evers Road. That's a future consideration, because again, they want, they just want to keep connecting it. And again, health, safety, and welfare, it's wonderful. So thank you for your efforts, I appreciate it. And, yeah, and it's competitive, the, the grants from the AAMPL are competitive, and so I commend Melinda and our staff for writing those grants to submit to, for funding, so we've gotten the, the two grants. So thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Okay. You know where I live?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, as I was saying, that this will not affect anything right behind me for at least a year or so.
Correct. We will not start construction until 2023.
Okay, now, is there going to be a hard surface behind there?
Yes. In order to meet ADA requirements, it must be an all-weather surface, and typically, that's done with a 10-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay, which puts it, how many feet from the property line?
That I wouldn't be able to tell you without looking at the plans, but I'd be happy to show you that, you know, sometime next week if you needed to.
Okay, well, I'm just curious.
Sure.
You know, it'll be a while, so. You've answered a lot, and this is why I came.
Good, I'm glad. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Melinda. Thought I had during your presentation is if it ends at Evers Road, will the users be parking there around the library, I guess, if they want to get on the trail at Evers Road? And then if so, would need to upgrade the pedestrian crossing at Evers and the library. So I had to get in my two cents on the crossing again. Thank you.
We're going to have a trailhead down at, well, there already is a trailhead down at Shadow Mist for the city of San Antonio's portion, but then we're also going to have a trailhead in the large parking lot at Raymond Rimkus Park. And the thought is that it sort of ends at Evers Road as far as this TechStop construction goes, but we have a trail that goes all the way back here and that goes all the way up to Stirrup. So there's a lot of people that use this trail already just to get to Raymond Rimkus Park. So we definitely want to update the pedestrian crossing right now anyway, without a trail, because right now, you cannot see those lights in that road, and that system that was put in is now obsolete, so we need to do something about it anyway. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Is that working? There we go. Thanks. I love that this is what people come to this meeting for. When, when my wife and I first moved here, we moved to the San Antonio area in 2014, moved to Leon Valley in 2015, and the year in between, we rented a house over off of Calabria, and our house backed up directly to the, the San Antonio Greenway Trail System. And for us, it was the best amenity we could have imagined, right? We're, like, we just, we moved from Michigan, we rented our place sight unseen and had no idea until we got here. And this was the very first time I moved to Leon Valley, the town, this town hall meeting in 2016, January 2016, we were talking about this issue, right? And getting this done. So I'm very passionate about these trails. They are a fantastic amenity to connect our community to the broader San Antonio area. And to tack on to what the mayor said, this is a trail system, right now, there's already 70 miles worth of trails, and so you can go and get on at Grissom, you can get on at Shadow Mist, and you can literally go all the way around the city. If you want to ride a bike to the Alamo or to any of the missions, literally the missions around town, that trail is connected to all of them. And so if you are a biker, walker, we would literally just roll the stroller out the back, back gate of our fence and roll it right on to the trail. So it really is a great amenity. And being able to connect Rimkus Park to the broader community, I think, is really, really a great thing. So I love this. The only question I would have, Melinda, is when we were looking at the slides, I think it said October 2022 is the start of engineering?
Yes, sir.
Is there something right now that's preventing us from beginning engineering?
Budget?
Fair. Okay. We can talk about that offline.
All I need is money, that's all. In addition to what you've said about San Antonio, I was speaking to Brandon Ross, who works with the city of San Antonio, and he had called about four or five months ago, and he was like, "Aren't you going to plan more trails? Aren't you going to do more?" And I was like, "Sure, we would love to, all it takes is money." And he said, "Well, why don't you go ahead and plan out a route so that you can take this trail that goes right here and maybe take it all the way up the creek to the city of San Antonio city limits by Balki, and then they want to connect there." And so there's plans for more coming, it just takes a lot of money, so. Yes, ma'am?
I have kind of an unrelated, but it's a park question.
Sure.
So, tell me this great park at the, oh, gosh. By Heebner, the one by the church there. I can't remember what it's called.
Oh, the Silo Park.
The Silo Park.
Yes, ma'am.
I love the Silo Park, I love all the equipment there, but there's no parking. And it's, it's such a loss because you never see anybody there, and there's so many resources there. So what are the plans to make that park more accessible?
There, it was planned from the beginning to not have any parking. That is supposed to be a walk-to-park by the neighborhoods around there. The, the component that's still missing, that we're still working on, is a really good sidewalk that goes from Heebner Road into that park. That needs to be widened there. We have a huge drainage culvert there that you've seen, and we need to do work on that drainage culvert. So we're going to add that sidewalk in as a part of that work, so that will come out of our stormwater fund. Then that will make that accessible for the people that live in Pabona and the people that live in Linkwood. In addition to that, there is a very unused trail, it's called the Linkwood-Pabona Place Trail, and that goes from Linkwood behind St. John's Baptist Church and down to the Coldestack on Evers Road. So next year, we'll be working on improving that trail. We already put outdoor fitness equipment up there for people to use. So then Linkwood would be able to walk down the Linkwood-Pabona Place Trail, down to Heebner Road, cross over, go down, and hit the Silo Park. And then you can keep on going, you can go to Raymond Rimkus Park. So we'll have an internal trail system here in Leon Valley, at least for this park.
So are there any plans to give us a map of where all these trails are? You're saying things that I didn't even know existed or can't picture where they are in my mind. So how do we get a map?
Sure, we have a park master plan, and it's available on our website under Parks. And if you look at that master plan, it talks about every single park, every single area. I think it even talks about whether or not it's been constructed yet or not. There's another trail called the Heatherington Trail, which we have not built yet, but we've already acquired the property, we already have plans for it, we just need to get the money to improve it.
Thank you.
All of that's in the park master plan on our website. Oh, on Grass Hill, yes. And that will connect to the ridge at Leon Valley Park. So you'll be able to do the trail around the ridge at Leon Valley Park, go up the Heatherington Trail, come back on down, and enjoy that area.
Wow.
Yes?
Melinda, can you put the second part of the trail back up?
I cannot, they'll have to do it for me.
I just, I'm, I'm, picture's so small, I can't visualize how this is going to go through the park.
There you go.
Where exactly is that?
So down here's Bandera Road. This is the Heebner Indian Natural Area Park, here's the triangle area. So there, this is a huge CPS easement right here. So it'll come up here, and then this is the...
It's where the tower is. Okay, I just couldn't visualize it, okay.
And then here's the softball field, here's the large playground, and then here. Here's that trail that's existing that I was talking about. It's not improved except by well-worn feet.
So it's going to go behind all the homes on Sunlight?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much, y'all have a good weekend.
You're awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Well, we are actually a little ahead of time, so that's great. There'll be more time for citizens to be heard. Next, we've got the American... Next, we've got the American Rescue Plan presentation by Dr. Crystal Caldera. As many of you know, when the Biden administration began in 2021, they passed a huge bill and the city received $3 million. Our first check came last summer, 1.5 million. And next summer, about this, next summer, we'll receive the additional 1.5. So Dr. Caldera is going to go over what we've already spent some money on and we have, you know, what else do we need? What are our needs in the community? We want to hear from you. One of the programs that we have funded, which we mentioned at the beginning of this program of the town hall meeting, was the utility assistance. So the council has designated $50,000 to help our citizens who are in need of help paying their utility bills. So that's just an example. But Dr. Caldera will go over it all. And again, we want to hear from you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Just to let everybody know, we're going to, as soon as this presentation is over, we're going to start picking up. We do have a guinconera scheduled for this afternoon, and so Public Works is going to come in and clean. So kind of last call for tacos and snacks in the back. So please help yourselves to the snacks back there. Okay? All right. So we're going to start with the American Rescue Plan funds. The mayor kind of went over the history, but these are basically the eligible expenses for American Rescue Plan funds. It could be COVID-19 expenditures, negative economic impacts of COVID-19, premium pay for essential workers. We also did that with the funds this year. Investments in water and sewer or broadband infrastructure. And so again, we received 1.5 million. And we will receive another 1.5 around August. So that gives us a total of about $3 million. And then one of the items that you're able, or eligible expenses you're able to do is basically what we call a lost revenue source. And so if the city felt like they lost revenue, and there's like a little formula that you have to put together in our general fund, we would be able to use about 1.7 million that didn't relate to one of those eligible expenses outlined by the federal government. So we could supplant that money in our general fund. And so we could use 1.7 million on anything outside of those eligible expenses. And so what the council has currently spent their money on is a 911 mass tech system. And so basically, that was like the robocall that many of y'all got yesterday evening. But if something were to happen, if we had a flood go on or some catastrophic event, we teamed up with Bear County for that. And so they would send out a blast to y'all as well. And so we kind of connected the two, and so y'all would receive that information as well. But this mass tech system allowed us to do the robocall, which y'all received over the, yesterday, I think. Right, Mark? Yes?
I would just ask if anyone have not already signed themselves up for that system, please go to our website and sign yourself up.
Yes. So if you haven't signed up, there is a link on our website to be able to do that. We went ahead and put $10,000 for PPE and decontamination supplies, disposable supplies and medication, two power stretchers, two LED cardiac monitor, some hotspots at the library, a Heedner well generator. We have put some AV equipment in the council chambers. This one has not been quite funded yet, but it would be covered under the lost revenue. Some PD AC repairs. We're going to be doing an upgrade to our website and muni code on how we stream our council meetings. Premium pay for essential workers, utility assistance program, and then we made some repairs to the library AC. And so these, this is just some ideas for the rest of the money that we received out of the 1.5 million. Again, these aren't things that have been purchased yet. The AV equipment in the conference center, the community and conference center, to be able to do what we're doing here. So today's equipment, we rented or we borrowed today. And so we pay for that. If the council would like to purchase such equipment, you know, that's how much it would roughly cost, about $120,000. We talked about a dog park. A couple of years ago, we did a survey, and one of the big things was a dog park. We're still looking at having communications with Google Fiber and hoping that they would go ahead and sponsor a dog park for us. But we know that's a big want in the community is a dog park. And so even if Google Fiber comes back to sponsor that event, they could reimburse the city, even if we expended those funds. As part of the agreement with the Crystal Hills Park, we did agree to do a skate park. Those funds need to come from somewhere at some point. And so we will have to, at some point, put up a skate park, whether it comes from general fund or from ARP funds. We do need a new command vehicle in the fire department. And then we have been wanting AMI water meters, which would give you real-time use for those of you on city of Leon Valley water system. If you had a leak, we get lots of complaints from Leon Valley residents that they may have had a leak and their water bill is so high. This would give you real-time usage on the leak. And so you could also get online and view your usage, get your billing, and so it would make things, and then you also save on staff time. We're not having to go by and do meter readings. It would all be imported into the system. And then for the next 1.5 million, for those of you that pay attention to our council meeting, if you watched the last council meeting, you realize we do not have a working fire truck at the moment. And so we have one that is out in service. We are borrowing one right now, actually. And so we need a, we need a new fire truck. And so how would, how would the city, the residents like to pay for that? The last fire truck we went out for was a million-dollar bond, which we're still currently paying on, but that truck is basically done. And so we still have debt on that truck. However, we're going to have to replace that truck. And so do you want to use ARP funds to be able to do that? It could be a little bit more than $800,000. It takes two years to get a fire truck in at the moment. And so we need to know how to fund it in order to be able to order it now, because you're going to be borrowing one for quite some time. And then water infrastructure needs. Y'all have about $30 million worth of water infrastructure needs. And so we're asking for some funds on water infrastructure. And then if you get to your Mentimeter, this is just a prioritization. There is water infrastructure, assistance to small business grants. We hear from the business community that they would like to see more business-related grants. Assistant programs for the community, like the utility assistance program that we currently have. Would you like to see more of those? Something came up when we were meeting last week. Maybe, we do have some individualized flooding on certain properties. Maybe it's something to that nature, like helping install front drains on individual properties. Help balance the FY23 budget, which we did last year. As part of, as we were talking about the bond, new restrooms in the park. You could use some of the funds to be able to do new restrooms in the park, and that would be taken out of your potential bond. The new librarianics is also in your bond. And so again, if that's something you don't want to put in your bond, you could use ARP funds to be able to purchase that. Library remodel. The library's kind of outgrown itself as far as staffing. And so they're looking at expanding that office space in the back so they have more workspace. Widening the creek to reduce flooding and creek cleanup to reduce flooding. And so we wanted to know your prioritization. And these are just some ideas that we kind of came up with. So if you get on Mentimeter, you can go ahead and start prioritizing in the order, one being your biggest priority. And it looks like flooding, and we kind of anticipated that. And water infrastructure needs seems to be coming into third place. And so again, prioritize your items. Let's go to the next slide. And then the last slide is we want to hear from you. So if there's something that I didn't list on the prioritization, to please, it's an open-ended question, to please put in what you want. You can go ahead and type that in. Again, these questions will be live on Mentimeter. We'll go ahead and put the link on the homepage of our website till Monday. Do y'all have any questions I can answer for you? Really? No questions?
You did a great job.
No, no. And then while I'm up here, I'm just going to give some clarification because I heard somebody, there's some confusion. The Lion's Roar is a newsletter that gets mailed out to every resident in Leon Valley. If you're not receiving that Lion's Roar, please let us know. Sometimes we had residents that wanted to not receive the Lion's Roar, and so they were removed from our address listing. And then we have a new resident that moves in that home, and we didn't realize or don't realize that y'all aren't included in the address listing because that person was removed from a later time. The eNews is an email that is sent every Friday with upcoming events. And so if you want to subscribe to that, you can go to the back table and you can, there's a form back there, or you can email me or Crystal Miranda, and we can subscribe you. And it just comes to your email every Friday. And so those are the, that's the difference between eNews and the Lion's Roar. It seems like there was some confusion about that. Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Also, let's talk about Public Works Notify, that system, or did we already switch to Rave?
We're, we, not yet. So we still have the Public Works Notification System. That's the text when you, for street sweeping, like when Billy's getting ready to go out to street sweep, he sends a notification so you can move your vehicles. And so that, you can also sign up on our website. We will eventually be moving all that over into one platform, which is Rave. But right now, we're kind of split. So we have the city notifications on one and the street sweeping on another, or public works related.
And you can also, if you want to be notified when we're mosquito spraying, I know there's a lot of people out there that are allergic to some chemicals. The chemical we use for mosquito spraying is the same chemical you would put on your dog, but there's still a lot of people who are very sensitive to it. And so we will notify them, and that way they can shut their doors and windows for that day. And we typically do it at night, right around dusk or later. But still, you can close your windows for that night and not have to have that stuff in your house.
There's a question back there. Melinda, can you hand her the mic?
I have one.
Oh, there you go.
We do get the Public Works text messages, but I'm wondering about the robocall that you were talking about. Our phones are set up to where we only get phone calls from our contacts. So does that always come from the same phone number that we could put into our phones?
I don't know the answer to that, Mark.
Does it come through as a text?
So it would come through as a text? So no, it doesn't come through a dedicated number?
It would be yours.
Yeah. No, not PW, no, by yours.
Oh, great. Yeah. I put the phone number in.
So could we get that phone number from you then, that we could put in our phones?
I'll find out. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me see. Let's see. My dog was four when we started the hike and bike discussion. She's about to turn eight. Truly looking forward to funding for this to be finished. Why weren't nonprofit organizations included in this? Okay. So I just didn't include nonprofits on the prioritization list, but go ahead and add that as an open-ended, what you want. If you want to hear, if you want grants for nonprofit organizations, sorry, Ms. Hill, I just left it off. But if y'all would like to have nonprofits listed on the prioritization or for funding sources, please, please put that down on your open-ended question. I think that was it.
You know, I'm also curious. We have, this is our second source of funding. The first source that we had from the feds was the CARES Act. Do you remember that? That was right when we got hit with COVID. And so there was a lot of assistance for mortgage and rent. And I didn't know if we had that need here in Leon Valley. So would you let us know? I mean, I just, that, we could use that money. We could use some of this money if that is a need. I just don't know. So anyway, just was curious about that. All right. Thank you, Dr. Caldera, for your presentation. Do appreciate that. All right. So we are opening it up now, fairly early, to the citizens-to-be-heard portion of our section. So you can talk about any of the topics, I guess, that we've had before, or anything else that you'd like to discuss. So yes, Glenda, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to bring a microphone to you. And I'll rely on-
We have two separate subjects.
You bet. That's fine.
Now, one is about the leash laws.
The leash laws?
Because I have dogs running in my neighborhood, and I'm, some of them have attacked some of my neighbor's animals. And I'm afraid to take my little dog out for a walk anymore. So I'm wondering what, what's going on with leash laws, with animals running loose?
So you can always call the non-emergency number if you see a dog without a leash. We still have the leash law. You're required to keep any pet on a leash. And so if you see a dog roaming, call the non-emergency police number. It's 210-684-3215. And let them know you see a dog roaming. We will send our animal control out to try to capture the dog that's not on a leash. Or if it's a person that has let their dog out on a leash, normally they get a warning, and then if they caught multiple times, then they get a citation.
Okay. Thank you. And my other question-
Even on weekends, and we do have some officers trained to help, however, on the, we do have very regular work hours. If you see it in the evening after work hours, you know, you have to wait for an officer. And so if they're currently doing other things, it's going to take them a little while to get out there. But on the weekends, during the week, we do have animal control and code enforcement available.
Okay. Thank you. My-
210-684-3215. Is that right, chief? Nod your head. 684-321- Or is it 688-77?
77.
Either one will get you there, right? Yeah. Either one will get you there. 684-3215 will get you there, too.
Okay. Thank you. And my other question was, I don't know who takes care of Nextdoor, but I know it's called Forest Oaks Cantorfield. But you get notices of violent crimes and things, and I'll look up the street thing, and it'll be close to Lakeland or something. So what is the actual area that that covers? What's this, yeah, I think it should just be Leon Valley.
So, I mean, Tina Chason could probably answer this because she was the administration of it. We only, we, we're not, we don't have any insight. So for those of you that post things on Nextdoor and thinks the city can see it, we cannot see what's going on on Nextdoor. So if you have a complaint, you really do have to reach out to the city. We cannot see what goes on on Nextdoor because we're not a resident of the city. And so we can post things on the city of Leon Valley page. We can post it out. But I cannot see what the residents are posting or the conversations going back and forth. I can only push information out. We can't receive information, and it's a weird thing Nextdoor has. So we don't set up Nextdoor. Nextdoor is its own social media platform. We just participate in it. I'm going to let Tina kind of explain it.
All right. It was over 10 years ago that I'm the founder of Nextdoor for Forest Oaks. I drew the line. What happened is last year, Nextdoor was sold. And with its sale, you'll notice a lot of advertisements repetitively showing up. They're making money off the app. The app started out as a very good way of communicating and engaging with your neighbors since we all go home, lift your garage door, go in, and that's it. We don't really sit on the front stoop. We don't engage with the neighborhood. on the front stoop. We don't engage with the neighborhood. This is a social media way of engaging. Now, when you are receiving posts from Castle Hills, Del View, way on the west side, east side, you can actually go into your, where you see the icon for yourself or your picture if you entered one, and you go down to Settings and Neighborhoods, you can select the neighborhoods that you want to receive information from. Now, that being said, I have narrowed mine down and they keep changing it. So, you have to keep going back and re-entering your information. I don't know how much this has to do with the ULA or what they're using in the program or the advertising. And I think that's what's happened. So, yeah, you can preference your neighborhoods that you want to see to eliminate a lot of the confusion and the excess posts.
Okay, thank you. Hold on just a second.
But I've been told that there's nothing Leon Valley. It's Leon Creek. We don't live in Leon Creek.
It's become a Nextdoor conversation?
Yeah, I know. Several years ago, during two, two, three elections ago, it started with certain individuals that were on council that decided to rewrite with the permission of a couple of neighbors in the other neighborhoods to be included in their neighborhood. So, Seneca used to be separate, but then it was re-entered into Leon Creek, Twin Creek, and it included all the way down to Evers Road to Grass Valley. It is ridiculous. You need to contact Nextdoor Support and say you want to be your own entity. You do not want to have to cross a major highway, Highway 16, to be included in their separate area. You are Seneca. So, my suggestion is to write to Nextdoor Support, support@nextdoor.com.
Okay. Any other questions?
You have to raise your hand. You got somebody behind you. Hold on.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hernandez. I've been a resident for three years. Within the three years, one year, my husband and I have become owners. And one of our concerns about a year and a half ago on Onnit, I just wanted to thank the city and thank the Leon Valley Police. They're, when it's called Onnit, it is really Onnit. They, they're Onnit within the same day. I think the latest response I've had was maybe the following morning. Well, I, I feel like in Seneca, they're always speeding. I don't know if anybody else has the same concern, but they're always speeding and it's more so one way more than the other. When you're driving from Evers to Bandera, there's only one stop sign as opposed to being pretty uniform on both sides and seamless on the, if you're driving from Bandera to Evers, there's, there's about three stop signs. So, every three blocks are pretty slow going that way. I requested a speedometer about a year and a half ago. Yes, so that is me. This is the face that I requested a speedometer. It worked, I would say, pretty well for when we had it. I think we had it for about a year. It was taken away maybe eight months ago. The speeding increased and within this month, unfortunately, our hail strip was destroyed. Somebody, I don't know if they were texting, driving too fast. I don't want to assume what had happened, but knowing how big and wide the street is, you can tell that they were highly distracted when they were driving and speeding, jumped our curb and destroyed our hail strip. I just learned what that term was just maybe a month or two ago. So, if you guys don't know what that is, it's that area of land between the street and your sidewalk. We had three raised galvanized beds. That's the only thing that's kept the truck or the car from hitting our fence. That's brand new. It's probably only been a year old. And that individual or that vehicle would have been in our backyard. And so, luckily, that happened. But again, it is expensive. The galvanized container itself was about 120 that we ordered online. Had to fix the sprinklers. We did everything. So, it's looking, it's looking nice all over again, but that was one issue. And that was on my birthday. So, that was a great birthday present, surprise for me. The next week, I was in a car accident. I was driving down Seneca. And I live off of, me and my husband live off of Seneca and Sundial. And as I was driving, I always put my blinkers ahead of time to turn into my driveway. As I was two-thirds into my driveway, and I have a Toyota Tundra truck, my bed was sticking out barely, the width of the, of the car. And she T-boned me and she hit me right on the rim. Luckily, there was no body damage. It was just rim and hubcap damage. But that just comes to say again how fast they're speeding. So, I just wanted to thank, again, the city and Leon Valley for hearing me on Onnit and for hearing our voice. And, and I saw it up on the screen that you guys are looking to implement the four-way stop at that corner to keep it pretty seamless and, and symmetric on, on both ends of Seneca. And also, for trying to put in a permanent speedometer so they can appreciate and respect that they are driving through a neighborhood. It is not just a shortcut. So, thank you. And to see if it can become a priority since it is relatively inexpensive to do.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I'm taking orders now.
Hi, my name's Barbara Costino, and I've lived here in Leon Valley since 1994. Anyway, I have a problem with the, I have oak trees. And the oak trees have these disease. Now, behind my house, there's an alleyway. And behind, on the other side of that alleyway is San Antonio. There's trees in that San Antonio yard, residential yard behind me, that have come over across the alleyway into my yard and has conquered my trees. And what can I do about it? I, I, you know, I have even, this guy that lives behind me has been a thorn in my side. He thinks he owns the alley. And I have put a trans, um, excuse me a minute. I have put a, God, I can't think of the word for somebody that comes into your yard without your.
Trespassing.
Trespassing, thank you so much. A trespassing concern with the city, but I've never heard anything more about it. And I was just wondering, what can we do about these trees that are coming over and killing my trees? There are these live oak trees. They're horrible trees. There's leaves all the way around, but now they're actually dying. My, the limbs are dying off my trees because somebody's not taking care of their trees in their yard. But it is San Antonio on one side and I'm in Leon Valley the other side. I'm the first street in Leon Valley, on Evers. Far as Dell, and I live on the cul-de-sac, Forest Cove. But I don't know what to do about it.
Oak wilt is really spreading here in Leon Valley, period. It just is. We've had the forester out to take a look, and she's actually published some new maps in the Montarobos Park area in particular and in Forest Oaks. So, it's coming at you, if you're on that street, it's coming at you from both sides. It's coming from San Antonio and from Leon Valley. So, we've got a lot of information on oak wilt posted on our website. You can also go to the Texas Forestry Service. They have a lot of information on oak wilt. Basically, if you have a tree in your neighborhood that's got oak wilt, you need to start treating your trees. And the way you treat it is with a fungicide. We have a kit. You can borrow it here at Public Works, or you can contact a landscape service that's got a certified arborist, and they can come and do that for you. But basically, the fungicide lasts about 18 months to two years. So, you would have to do it every 18 months to two years to keep your tree alive. As far as the tree limbs coming over into your property, typically, that's a private matter between two property owners, but we can call code enforcement and see if they can't come and help you. So, let me get your address from you after this.
I would appreciate it.
And we'll see what we can do about it.
Thank you so much.
All right. So, anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Anybody, anybody, any? No, go ahead, Mr. Yer. Go ahead, Mr. Yer now.
I raised my hand twice.
I know, go ahead.
According to Rescue, American Rescue Plans, is there any funds available for the businesses in Leon Valley?
So, that's on the prioritization list?
I'm trying to read it here. And I, I wear glasses because I can't see, so.
If you get on Mentimeter, so, the first round of funding we did with, the mayor mentioned, with the CARES Act, we did have some grants and we did support some local businesses dealing with COVID. And so, we, I know we gave some funds to the skating rink and a couple of other local businesses in the area. There was like four businesses. And so, that's on the prioritization list. And so, if you prioritize where you want to see, if you want more business grants available with that ARP funds, then we can set up business grants. And then, you also have economic and community development. And so, if any businesses need assistance in that manner, they could come and they had an application and everything they can fill out online to be able to apply for those funds. Okay?
Darby Riley, I live in Forest Oaks. I have a question about the library annex. I, I don't quite get the purpose of it, or I'd like the friends of the library or somebody to explain it to me. Because as I understand it, it's this old trailer over here that's full of used books that are, the library doesn't need, that we sell. And we sell them for 50 cents a copy or whatever at our various book sales that the library friends hold. So, it's a real minimal type money raiser for this, for the library friends, but it's $300,000 that we're talking about to replace that old trailer. And I'm just wondering if that's a smart thing to do or if there's something else. Can we have a discussion about it before we put it on our bond?
So, the, so Regina's here and she can answer it, but it was on the Capitol Facilities Committee. They did discuss it multiple times. The friends came out to justify why they needed to continue on with the library annex. But Regina can go a little bit more in detail because it's not just the book sales, right, Regina?
Right. It's not just the book sales. The first thing you need to understand, and this is what I told the Capitol Facilities Committee as well, is when you're dealing with library funding, it's not dollar to dollar. And so, while on paper, it looks like a minimal contribution that the friends are raising, it's actually for every $1 they raise, we're able to put at least $4 back into the community with that. So, that's the number one understanding. Number two, as we're looking at creating a new annex, we're looking at creating more possibilities with it. We're looking at creating some type of museum as well with the archives that we have. And our archives are highly underused and there are great history of Leon Valley. And a lot of it is done with the Historical Society as well. And we have artifacts and papers and documents and pictures. And we're looking at being able to create a kind of walkthrough museum as well, as well as increasing the amount of storage for the archives that we have with those artifacts and things because the library is running out of space. We have outgrown ourselves in many capacities. So, I do have a couple of presentations. I don't have them with me today, but they are something that I can forward and send to anyone that's interested. And.
We can do that.
Okay.
Just forward them to me and I'll make sure Mr. Riley gets them. Any other questions? I know I saw a hand back here somewhere. Here, go this way and I'll go that way.
Okay. Hi, again, this is Leece. Another shout out to Nextdoor. Somebody was, of course outraged about some new development on Heebner and Evers roughly. And I think one thing that I noticed after living in Houston for a while was that whenever new development would take place, they'd put like a big sign saying, "Public comment, notice of variants." And, you know, we didn't, I didn't notice anything. Is this something that Leon Valley is intending to do to notify the public if maybe any public input?
So, I guess Melinda can answer that one here.
We had a sign up on that property, but we had that huge windstorm and it blew it down. And nobody went to check to see if it survived. So, it was actually on the ground over there. But we do send notices out to everyone within 200 feet of the property. That's state law that we do that. And that gives them a chance to come to the public hearing. We have two public hearings. One's before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then also before the City Council so that they have a chance to weigh in on it.
Melinda, is that the one that I have on the E! News as well that David sent to me? I think I've had the Heebner constructions, like, notification on there.
Yeah, that wasn't it? No.
No, we try and send out notices about when we're going to do roadway work and sewer and water main replacements. So, that's the stuff he would send to you. But no, we don't put any kind of zoning cases on the E! News.
But maybe, maybe we should start posting it. Okay.
I live on Longhouse Court, and we have a really bad cat problem. And nobody owns these cats, but I know I have a number of neighbors that feed the cats on their porch or whatever. But they decide to use my courtyard as their litter box. What can we do about, I don't even know whether they're feral anymore because they're not afraid of anything. What can we do about cats? I know dogs, there's a leash law, but cats, what do you do?
I thought we were going to make it one meeting without cats. So, we have a TNR program with the City of Leon Valley. So, if you see feral cats out, people should not be feeding them from their porch. So, you can turn them in to Onnit, and we will send animal control out there to warn people to please not put food out. And we do capture cats. They do get a notch put in there. They get neutered, but they do get released back into their colony. That was a program the council adopted many years ago. So, we don't take the cats and dispose of them. They, they get, they get, hey, we, I don't go there with the cats here. This community is split 50/50. But they do get neutered and they get released back into, into the colony. So, if you do have cats, especially cats that don't live with anybody, they are still considered feral even though somebody is feeding them. Please just let us know. We'll try to go out and send some, some traps out there so we can capture them. The whole idea is that you reduce population. Once they get neutered, they start, you know, procreating all the time. Yes, please, just let us know and we can send somebody out there. Any other questions? You're going to talk about the cats, aren't you?
I just wanted to add this. Once your feral colony gets all fixed, they protect your area from other cats coming in. That's number one. Number two, Leon Valley has always had a roof rat and mouse problem, rodents everywhere, snakes. When you have an established, safe, feral colony in your neighborhood, you don't need pest control. So, that's something to be considered.
Any other questions? You have a question? All right, let's go.
When I go to Leon Valley Parks, like Silo Park and Brumkis Park, I see a lot of ant hills.
Melinda, ant hills, Silo Park. I saw a hand back here.
Hi, we're at Debonita Mosier. We live on Balky Street. We've been there since 2004. And we've got a lot of co-compliance type issues. I would really like it addressed as far as who's supposed to be reporting the obvious violators. Do I need to be driving around? Is there a co-compliance officer? Or when the police are driving around? Because I, I handed to them, I'm seeing them more visible nowadays. But we did get our, we get the flea market stopped, but now it is a just pile. We've got three vacant houses on our street that are fairly well maintained, but we have the Eminaville Horror at the top of the hill, which I don't know what's going on with that house. And then we have all the transients from the Green Belt. There are some pretty scary videos on the neighborhood, what I call the neighborhood gossip page, where they're coming into the backyards and looking in windows. So, not for sure what can be done about that, but I appreciate it.
So, our co-compliance is usually reactive, not proactive. They're not driving around the neighborhoods because they have so many fires to put out day to day. We only have two code enforcement officers and they split the week so that you have code enforcement seven days a week. So, report, 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 report. And so, report to Onnit. If you see somebody looking at somebody's window, call 911. We will send a police officer out there. The police, as you said, are more visible in the community. And so, when they're out and they see something, they, they try to report it. But any code violations, you can report to Onnit. You can call the code enforcement officer. You can call City Hall and just report it. Onnit's usually the best way. It's our way we keep track and I make sure follow-up is happening. So, please report it to Onnit. And we try to keep track of making sure people are going out and kind of addressing those issues. Any other questions? Go this way and I'll get to you, Mr. Bowl.
My name is Yvonne Orozco. I live in Pavona Place. I've been involved, I guess, with Leon Valley for the last few years. And I'd like to just take a moment to thank the staff of Leon Valley, the council, including the mayor, the Public Works has done an amazing job during the pandemic, firefighters, police officers. I really want to take a shout out to Johnny Vazquez, who is the neighborhood police officer for Pavona Place. He set up a neighborhood Facebook and let us know just recently that he is working 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM and is driving through our neighborhood with his bright lights on. So, when we're seeing that, we know. We did have an issue at our home when it was 19 degrees at, what, 4:21 in the morning, somebody breaking into one of our vehicles. And that, yes, they were locked. And he was there within three minutes. But what I really want to say is the volunteers here in Leon Valley. I think two years ago, three years ago, I put in my application to be a volunteer for different committees here in Leon Valley. And at the time, I said, oh, you know, I'm interested here, 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 you know, wherever you need me. I didn't know that I was going to end up being on, what, five committees for Leon Valley. But I have loved every minute of it. And I really want to say that everyone should take a turn at being on these committees. I wouldn't be on five of them if people volunteered for them. But I'm, I mean, that's something, I'm a Air Force brat. So, I'm used to public service and I'm happy to do it. But I think everybody should be willing to do that.
Here you go.
Thank you, Crystal, and thank you, Yvonne, for those comments. Evan Bowl, Barcelona Lofts, as actually a fellow committee member on some of the boards with Yvonne, I got to say the same thing. I serve on three of them. It's been wonderful. But new faces, different faces, diversity, it's going to bring us together wholly. To follow up on what was discussed about co-compliance and the police responding, is there anything, Crystal, that we could do about possibly lightening the load? I know we're still trying to, the growing pains of fully re-upping our police department, but in terms of the investigations, I know they're backlog and that slows things down at our end of calling in, getting a response time to certain concerns. Is there anything about bringing in the Sheriff's Department or another law enforcement agency to help us kind of pick up that pace real quick and then when it's done, do that, as well as finding the ability to fund a dispatch system to come back to Leon Valley? Thank you.
So, we, so there's kind of multiple questions there. So, mutual aid, we, there have been plenty of times, you know, the constable. So mutual aid, there have been plenty of times, you know, the Constable Bear County, Northside Independent School District have helped us out with traffic, especially on Bandera Road when we've had traffic accidents. But we've reached out for mutual aid. Every city, every organization, every agency has their own issues and challenges, and so the answer to that in short is no, they're not going to come and police. But they are, this is part of their precinct too, is part of Leon Valley, and so you will see Bear County in our area. That's their way of assisting. The dispatch came up at the Citizens Police Advisory Committee. The city of Leon Valley cannot afford its own dispatch center. I pulled the numbers from 2014 and 2015. Salaries by themselves in 2014 and 2015 were about $279,000. And you don't have infrastructure to buy the radios and cables. You're looking at over a million dollar expense to buy the councils for each of the dispatch centers. At the time, you were employing five dispatchers. We would be out of compliance right now. You would at least need a minimum to between, what we were told back in 2015, at least eight to ten. Briefly talking to the chiefs, we probably need ten and one administrator, which would be probably about eleven, because you're running a twenty-four hours, basically, call center, you know, 911 dispatch, you need to have a minimum of two. And there's a lot that goes into it. You have to have radios in the restroom, you have to have the building completely secured, gated and locked. There's a lot of CEGIS compliance, T-LIT's compliance, that all costs money. And so, you know, you just, you, even salaries alone right now, because you're not going to pay 2014 salaries, even at twenty dollars an hour for a dispatcher, you'd be close to a half a million dollars ongoing costs just for employing a dispatcher, not to talk about radio upgrades or GIS upgrades or your preemption system that you use. The city could not afford to add its own dispatch. And as a matter of fact, when we left dispatch at the time and we went to the city of Halotas, we were paying about a hundred and fifty thousand for that contract. We couldn't afford the hundred and fifty thousand then. That's why we went to Bear County. And you pay for dispatch with the county through your taxes. You pay county taxes, and that's why we use Bear County. And so currently, right now, you don't, you have zero charge for your dispatch. And so it's very important for y'all to understand that I think with the concerns around the community, aren't 911. When you call 911, as Yvonne mentioned, you get an officer out fairly quickly because it's a 911 call. The calls that I think that are getting missed in the community are those calls that used to happen back in the early nineties when we didn't have the call volume we have now. You know, we were running probably about 2,000 calls. We're running exponentially higher now. And so when you're calling because there's a loose dog in the neighborhood, yeah, you're going to get put at the end when you're calling the non-emergency number because they're dealing with accidents, burglaries, murders that are going on, you know, within these three point five score miles. Unfortunately, Leon Valley doesn't have a fence around it, and so you take on other crime that's happening or, you know, right outside Leon Valley travels into Leon Valley. You've got three apartment complexes that have turned into Section Eight, and so that brings its own kind of problems. One apartment complex alone, within a one-year span, got eight hundred and five calls just for one apartment complex. You, and just imagine that you just increased your police department from twenty-five to forty-one within the last three years. Your call volume has been going up quite a bit over the course of the years. And so it's just important to understand that everything is possible, and I brought it up to the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, if that's something the community wants. A penny raises about a hundred thousand dollars in property tax, you know? You can do the math. We can go up to about three percent without calling for the voters on that. But again, if that's something that y'all want to consider, it's not doable, but you also have to cut services. So when you want to, if you want more dispatchers, you're probably going to have to cut police or Public Works or some other service. The city can't have a full service city with the amount of money we currently are incurring. Hopefully that answers all your questions. Okay. No. I mean, so grants run out. We used to, and Melinda can testify to this, we used to have a code enforcement officer that was grant-funded for many years. When that goes away, what happens? The community gets used to wanting a code enforcement officer, and so then you have to encompass that in the general fund. We had the hotspots for the library. We got a grant for that. The community got used to that. Now it's encompassed in what we paid for it out of ARP funds this year to continue that service. So once you take on a service, the community gets used to that. So when grant funds, because they do run out, they don't last forever, you can start a program and then you have to figure out a way to pay for them. Eventually, your red light camera money is going to run out. I mean, 2037 is the end of the contracts. You're going to have to figure out how to fund, continue to fund those positions. And so it's definitely a planned transition that needs to happen. Any other questions?
My last one is just another concern regarding fences. I didn't know if the city has established something to the point that they're giving warnings first for individuals to start collecting the funds to either repair their fences or redo their fences. There's a lot of unsafe and unsound fences throughout Evers and down Seneca that I've noticed when I'm walking my dog, and it's, it's a little nerve-wracking when you're walking your dog, and a fence that's missing boards and leaning only supported by a crepe mural with the dog inside parking back at you.
So we do have a fence ordinance, and so you can report it to Onnit. We can go out and take a look. Fences are very expensive, and so we do have an aging community here, and so we do get a lot of pushback in regards to making residents incur costs in doing repairs to their fences. But let us know, and we'll take a look at it and see if we can assist in any way.
One thing I'll add on to the fence topic, we did just recently make a change to the fence ordinance. And part of the genesis of that change was to allow homeowners an incentive to repair their fence. And so we up, we moved from having a limit of a six-foot fence to now you can have an eight-foot fence. So if your fence is broken down or something like that, and you decide, hey, I'd like a higher privacy fence, you have that option to build up to eight feet. And so while we can't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal, I don't think we can use taxpayer funds to fund improvements on private property. So like the city can't pay to fix someone's fence. What we can do is we can say, we can allow within our ordinances for whatever situation that you're, or that particular property owner may desire, they can have more flexibility in terms of what they can and can't build. And so where somebody that says, okay, I've got a six-foot fence and it's leaning over and there's missing boards, there's not really any benefit or cost, or, sorry, there's no benefit to the cost of me replacing that fence. But if they know that they can build a higher fence, or they can build a different kind of fence, or they can do different things, and they have that flexibility within the ordinance, then that's what we're hoping people will do, is update those fences because now they have that flexibility.
Okay.
Thank you. Follow up on that question, Crystal. If a community comes together, Seneca neighborhood all comes together, has a well-thought-out presentation, requests, signatures, like all of them, and says, these are the areas of our neighborhood which affect the safety, quality of life of our neighborhood, could they not come and request basically community funds for that if it is an entire neighborhood together?
So any improvements done on private property, we could not use city funds. But if it was health, safety and welfare in regards to like a right-of-way, we do have like neighborhood renewal programs we've utilized in the past. If you're noticing like crime-ridden houses or squatters living in a house, that, you know, we can assist with that, obviously. We've boarded up homes, you know, so there's certain things we can do to keep the community safe. But if you got a petition because you want to replace everybody's, you know, privacy fence along Evers Road just because it doesn't look right, we couldn't spend city funds. Our attorneys have told us in the past, we couldn't spend city funds on private property. So for aesthetics, no. Health, safety and welfare for like maybe a med house, we've done that a couple of times where we go and clear it out, board it up, we can do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
He's got one more question.
One more question. I just, I have two letters that I needed to read, but while, before I interrupt you, I didn't mean to. I just wanted to recognize our mayor emeritus, Irene Baldridge. She's here this morning. She was our mayor from 1984 to 1994, plus served on the council before the mayor and after the mayor. So I'm just, it's just so great to see you, and I just wanted to recognize you because she's truly been at the rock of our city. So thank you so much.
Good morning. I am Chad Gartner with Hefner.
Uh-oh. It's starting again. All right. Thank you, sir, for allowing me. I didn't know if she was going to leave, and I just wanted to capture her before she left. Thank you, Irene.
This is again regarding development, because I see it as the only, as somebody who's living here now and, you know, hoping to be here longer term, and, you know, keep hearing about lack of revenue. But is there, is there any kind of initiative to attract development that could potentially bring additional revenue or revitalize the community? And I know there's some pushback from people that have lived here longer, but is there some kind of initiative to bring not only development in general, but maybe have some kind of deed restrictions to have some kind of control over what the qualities of the development are?
So that's kind of a two-part question, too. So, so yes, development is always big. We're sprawled out city, you're three point five score miles, you're completely built out for the most part. We have a couple of pockets that have available vacant land on them. The big focus would be redevelopment. And so you're looking at redeveloping your main corridor as far as increased sales tax. We tried, and the council's looking at this again, but we tried sustainability overlay to help with the aesthetics of the way Bandera Road looked. We have in turn found that to be complex because, and then we're keeping businesses from coming in, and so they're having a harder time coming in. And so there's this kind of conversation, and actually, if you want to watch, at the next council meeting, the sustainability overlay and parts of that discussion will be discussed at that meeting. But we try to fix the aesthetics with the sustainability overlay along Bandera Road so you would get more quality of business. And then what we found was that it was a little bit more complex and you weren't getting quantity, I guess. And so, yes, so we do have development standards. The legislature came down and said, we can't tell people what kind of building materials that they can use any longer, so we have to be careful on how we word certain things. But when we have a development, and we always talk about give and take, and so we talk about adding trees and making things look more beautiful. So I hope that answers your question a little bit. I mean, I mean, we have an economic development, so you're looking at two types of development. You have economic development that handles the retail, your business community, and looking at redevelopment, and he's actively doing that. And then we only have small pockets to be able to develop homes. And so one of the ones that you're hearing about is the ten-acre lot, and they're trying to do a very dense community in that area. And so that would raise revenue, but when you add property and homes, you also add people. And so even though that raises about a hundred thousand in property tax, you still, you have patrol, you have firefighters that now have to patrol that area, and you have city services that have to go in there. And over the years, y'all have added property, like the ridge, and you've never increased your public work staff, you never increased your firefighter or paramedics. So even though you've added these homes, you haven't increased your staff to be able to accommodate them. And so, again, that's part of the conversation. So hopefully that makes that a little bit clearer. Or more muddy, I'm not sure.
I think I'll give your question, or your second part of your question a try, but from, ever since I've been on the council with my colleagues, I think we've made a concerted effort to try to be friendly to the businesses and the developers and the current owners, prospective owners, the developers. And what I've seen right now is, and there's a lot of projects brewing, and I think we're realizing that there's bureaucratic barriers, there's cost barriers to these developers, and so we're trying to find ways to meet in the middle, and we're demonstrating that to them, like making conscious efforts to demonstrate that to them. So then they're more, you know, they come halfway, we go halfway back. In the past, I think that we may have been a little bit too rigorous with our standards, that it was just preventing developers from even wanting to touch our city. And so now we're seeing, and there's multiple developers that are very interested in properties that actually bug us constantly now because they see that we're willing to meet them at the middle. So I hope that kind of answered that.
Okay.
Oh, hold on, there's one more.
Counselor Orozco, I know we have an end time at 12:30, but I do have two letters that I need to read, but I think we're okay.
Well, just real quick, Constable Hefner said about the ordinance for the fence, it does not overrule communities that have a homeowners association. The deed restrictions for the homeowners association rules that.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Mayor. I'm going to cut everybody off.
Okay. All right. So we have two letters that have come in, and I'd like to read the first one. It's from Elaine Valdez in Pavona Place. "Thank you, city staff and council, for listening to my concerns regarding the distribution of the bi-monthly Lion's Roar. I was delighted when I saw the Lion's Roar newsletter incorporated in last week's e-news." So thank you for those comments. And then secondly, we received an email last night from Louise Malouf, who also lives in Pavona, and she states, "I will not be able to attend the town hall meeting on Saturday due to a previous appointment, but I am wondering why we even have a zoning commission. Recently, at least two items that were denied, maybe overwhelmingly, but at least by a majority, by the zoning commission, were overturned and approved by the new city council. Just in observation. Margaret Malouf." So those are the two, and anything else for the good of the cause? This has been an excellent town hall meeting. I really appreciate y'all giving your time, your talent, your efforts, your ideas. It's been fantastic, and we will certainly listen and proceed forward. So thank you again. Our next city council meeting is Tuesday, April the 5th at 6:00, and we hope to see you there. And we also stream it online. All right. Y'all take care, have a wonderful weekend, and be safe. Take care. Thank you.